And we'll begin our discussion. Good evening and welcome, board members, participants, and interested parties to the February 5th, 2025 meeting of the Cohasset Planning Board. The board is now in session on a Zoom platform at approximately 6:32. I am Amy Glassmeyer, interim chair of the Cohasset Planning Board, and will be running tonight's meeting as we implement Massachusetts Chapter 40A and Cohasset zoning bylaws. If anyone in the audience has questions for the board, please put them in the Q and A section at the bottom of the screen, or use the raise hand function. And when called, please limit your discussion to three minutes. You must include your name and address to be recognized. Presenting this evening on behalf of the Planning Board are Town Planner Cassandra Thayer and the Town Council Carolyn Murray. I will now take a roll call of the board members. Please respond by repeating your name and saying present. We work, starting with Clark Brewer.
Present.
Amy Glassmeyer, present.
Kevin Heine, present.
And Burgett Schmidt-Vishia, present.
Great, thank you very much. I'd like to notify everyone that we will be having a total of four rather than five board members this evening due to an illness in one of our members. That will mean that this evening we will be raising Burgett Schmidt's way to a voting member. Tonight, we have a quorum of four, which is what is the minimum number of persons that we need to have in order for the meeting to meet the requirements of the law. We will take all votes via a roll call with each member answering yea, nay, or abstain. Before proceeding to the public hearings, we will undertake a reorganization of members to elect a new chair. What I would also like to say is that we may wish to modify that last statement based on the fact that we have four and not five members, but I will let Mr. Brewer speak.
Yeah, just a point of order. I think for the site plan review, we only need three voting members. We don't need four. We do need four for the two special permits. And I'm getting nods from council saying, that's correct. Just a minor point of order.
Thank you very much. All right. So is it the board's preference that we reorganize at this moment? If so, can I get someone to, excuse me, just a minute, please? Can we get someone to recommend or nominate a member for the position of Planning Board Chair?
I was just gonna say, should we wait until our other member is present? She might want a chair or vice chair or something like that.
Our other member is going to be out for six to eight weeks.
Oh.
So that leaves us in a position. So here's one option. Basically, at the point of elections in the spring, that's the typical time that a planning board would nominate and then seat a member to be the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary. As we have a smaller number than typical, what we could do is retain the chair as is and then make a full election in the spring at the turn of the participants.
Just a quick comment. Since Dieter's gonna be out for such a long period of time and we're missing a regular member, perhaps we should try and get somebody appointed to that missing seat since we're February, March, April, May. That's three months, potentially three or four meetings.
Yes, I appreciate that. But let's try to stay with the list that I've identified in terms of how we're gonna operate. So you can raise that after we decide whether or not we want to retain the state now or to have an election. If so, would someone like to nominate an individual to be the chair until the next election? Mr. Heine? You're muted.
Just a point of clarification. If we elected to keep things as they are, who would be the temporary chair?
Well, I'm the temporary chair right now as the vice chair.
Yeah. And that would continue through the spring until we have this election that you just proposed?
That is correct.
Well, I've unmuted myself and I'll just opine on that. And I see no problem with doing that as proposed.
Do I hear a second?
What was that?
So what Mr. Heine said was that, I believe, he said that he agreed with what I proposed.
I'll just clarify, Clark. I propose that we nominate and elect to have Ms. Glassmeyer as our temporary chair until spring elections 2025, when we elect to have a permanent chair in nominations for such.
Okay, but that's no different than what we have now.
No, that's exactly right.
Well, actually.
You're recommending the status quo and not changing anything, which is fine.
It's up until we make a more permanent decision at the coincidental with the spring election.
Sure.
Thank you for that. We still need to second this and we still need to vote on it.
Okay, I'll second the status quo.
All right, thank you. For all of those who would like to stay with the status quo, please say aye, please say your name and aye or nay.
Aye. Kevin Heine, aye.
Burgett Schmidt-Vishia, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. All right, so we are now operating within that context.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need a vice chair appointed along with it? So you are the chair now.
Right, that's correct.
From the vice chair. Yeah, I can see who's going to be the vice chair. Do we not need one?
Mr. Brewer, if we kept the same procedure, Clark Brewer was the secretary, he would be the vice chair and we would need to appoint an individual or we could elect an individual for the remaining position of secretary.
Well, we don't necessarily technically have to have a vice chair in, I think it's called the clerk instead of the secretary. But we could just, I mean, Kevin's motion was to maintain the status quo. So if for some reason there's a hearing where we only need a quorum of three members and Ms. Glassmeyer is not present, then any of us could chair that particular meeting. But I expect that it would probably not happen. And then go through our full leadership, if you will, in the spring. Because right now, we don't have a clerk.
Right.
So, I don't know. Sort of, it worked, sort of. Whatever everyone wants to do, probably gonna be fine with me.
Well, but Clark, would you serve as the vice chair?
If.
We can't have that chair unfilled.
Well, we could. It's, we could.
It's not common.
I mean, if you're saying in addition to voting on Amy as chair, you want me to be vice chair to run a meeting potentially? If for some reason you're not gonna be there and that would be limited, I'm happy to step up in that important role.
All right. Thank you for that. So can I get a second? You have nominated yourself, Mr. Heine?
I am happy to second that.
All right, let's do a roll call vote. Please say aye, nay, or abstain, starting off. Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
And Burgett Schmidt-Vishia, aye.
Having not been in a position where the associate offended to a full member, voting member, Carolyn, what's the mechanism for that to take place?
I'm not concerned about it because you're a membership of five. So your quorum is only three. Now, we're not acting on a special permit or anything that requires a supermajority vote. So a vote to reorganize the board really only requires three votes. So both of your motions would carry, notwithstanding the elevation of an associate member.
All right.
I believe in our general bylaws, the associate member once was only allowed to vote if a member was conflicted or missing for a special permit. But then we changed that language so that the chair, you, Ms. Glassmeyer, can opt to have the associate member vote for any matter.
That is correct, because that was how I actually came onto the board and began to vote. Is that correct, Carolyn?
I take a little exception to that because I know that this came up once before. In my opinion, you needed a special act of legislation to authorize an associate member to do something more than what Chapter 40A authorizes. You can't just do it by a bylaw. But again, I don't think that affects any of your votes that you've just taken or certainly acting on the special permit. The special permits this evening, it would be appropriate for the associate member.
So, I mean, it strays slightly from the mass general laws, but we did pass it as a part of our general bylaw at town meeting.
No, I understand that. And I prefer to go back and actually look at how that came about procedurally because there are lots of things that wind up in bylaws that perhaps don't quite say what we think they say or perhaps don't mean what we thought they meant.
I've always wondered where the ZBA has three associate members and that's certainly not what is included in the mass general law. Let's always vote.
I, you know, we're getting a little off topic on that.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It's a fair point.
While you're checking into the language of our general bylaw related to 40A, please check into what the ZBA has set up in practice. If you would be so kind.
I don't know that that will change anything, but yes.
Right.
All right, so this evening we have three items that we need to address. Two public hearing, or three, all three are public hearings. Chief Justice Cushing Highway, 31 Dolan Lane, and 42 Rust Way. Our first public hearing is for a site plan review for 165 Chief Justice Cushing Highway for construction of a 40,000 square foot storage warehouse. This is a new public hearing. Rather than having somebody need to read the public hearing, I'll read the public hearings for the evening. Pursuant to MGL Chapter 40-A and 300-12.7 of the Cohasset zoning bylaws, the Planning Board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom Planning Forum, webinar ID 889863865, excuse me, 86358690, passcode 421934, on Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, at 6:30 PM or thereabout for a site plan review for the property being shown on Cohasset Assessor's Map, B5-73-005 comma B6 dot dash 74 dash 001 comma and B5 dash 74 dash 014 comma 165 Chief Justice Highway, Cohasset, Massachusetts, 02025. The application is for a site plan review for construction of a 40,500 square foot storage warehouse. The applicant is submitted by Hingham Lumber Company, 165 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Cohasset, Massachusetts, 02025. A copy of the application and plans and accompanying documentation are on file for view in the Town Clerk's office at Cohasset Town Hall, 41 Highland Avenue, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, and Friday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated. With that, I would like to also import that commencing the hearing, we ask the applicant to present, asking the peer review to present, ask for member comments, then ask for public audience comments, and the planner will assist with the timekeeping and reading public comments. We request that you keep your comments to a minimum and three minutes, we hope, will suffice. And so we will begin with the description from the peer review.
The applicant to the peer review.
Oh, excuse me, the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. My name is Jeff DeLeese. I represent Hingham Lumber. On the Zoom panel tonight is Tom McNulty. Tom is the president of Hingham Lumber Company. And then we have Bill Buckley of Bay Colony Group, who should be on the call. I'm wondering if perhaps he's in the queue. If you are, Bill, and could raise your virtual hand, that'd be great. I'll get into this. Y'all know Hingham Lumber. It's one of the most successful family businesses and one of the largest employees in the town of Cohasset. Hingham Lumber intends to construct a distribution building on the site, which is to be used in connection with its retail business that currently exists. There are two existing buildings, both constructed about 20 to 23 years ago. And this proposed building is necessary to service the existing projected needs of the business going forward, if it is to be competitive. So the company is under contract to purchase about 22 acres west of the existing property. And I'm more than happy to share my screen just to give the board a sense of what we're talking about, which is this. So we have our existing building over here. We have a second building, which is where folks drive in to pick up lumber, essentially. And then we are, the board recently signed an A and R plan, which essentially draws a line right here. And we would be purchasing this and this over here. And so that is all about 22 acres. The location of the proposed site, which I will get into in a second, is behind that second building, directly pretty much to the west. Essentially, what we are going to do is that overstocked package items and lumber will be bought into the proposed building and then loaded onto trucks for distribution offsite. The building inspector has determined that the proposed use is allowed in the zoning district. Hingham has really run, Hingham Lumber's really run a first-class business over the years and is taking care to keep this, to keep its property in operation very clean and safe. And they've kind of extended that into this project and taken great care to design this project so that that gold standard continues. Procedurally, we've obtained a wetlands delineation. We've made an application to the Conservation Commission for notice of intent and a stormwater permit. That first hearing was last week. The commission is still pending. And I think our next hearing is currently scheduled for the 5th of March. The application before you tonight is for site plan review. The factors that go into a site plan review, which the Planning Board is required to consider are all spelled out in Section 12.7 of the Cohasset zoning bylaw. And those factors, in particular for this project, mainly focus on ensuring kind of a safe use of the site from the standpoint of vehicular, excuse me, and pedestrian movements and for the avoidance of nuisance. There is gonna be a certain interrelation and synergy between the existing lumber building and the proposed building. But I'm gonna let Tom kind of address that because he obviously has his head very much into the operations. And then we'll ask Bill to briefly go over the site. And then I'm sure we'll get into issues as Jim, you know, begins his peer review, so to speak. So, Tom, if maybe you can chime in here, that'd be great. You have to unmute yourself. Yeah, bottom left, I think.
Will we be seeing the applicant colleague on Zoom or will he only be speaking?
He's on Zoom. You see his face. He's wearing glasses. He's got a big shelf behind him.
Yep. That's me.
That means somebody has the phone on.
Be ready. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. McNulty, are you in the same room as Attorney DeLeese?
Yeah, should I move out of this room?
Or Mr. DeLeese could move for the moment.
That is a great idea.
He probably hasn't had dinner yet.
I think it's whatever computer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're getting the feedback.
He's physically moved his location. He's walking around right now. So my apologies for this technical.
That may help. That would explain why I could hear him even though he was muted.
Yeah.
It's probably better that I'm muted. Thank you. Sorry for that delay. First, let me say thank you for letting me talk tonight about our project. I did wanna start with just some background of Hingham Lumber. Most of you probably have been in there or been by there. But we started operations, Hingham Lumber started operations in 1947. This is our 78th year in business. Hingham Lumber moved from the Hingham location to Cohasset in 2003 due to an eminent domain taking by the state, which is for the old colony commuter rail project. So we opened 22 years ago, 3303, to be exact, kind of unique. Hingham Lumber's always been a family-owned and operated and plans to continue this tradition with my son TJ and my brother's son John, my brother's son Michael transitioning to leading roles at the company. The existing facility, two buildings completed in 2003, has a 24,000 square foot building designated for store showroom and offices. In addition, a 60,000 square foot drive-through building for customer pickup and HLC deliveries currently. The new distribution building has been under development or at least we've been reviewing it for over five years. The need for this building is to maintain the growth that HLC has realized over 22 years. This is an important investment in the future of our company. The existing drive-through building has been viewed by over 100 lumber dealers for a state-of-the-art design and efficient practices that it allows. HLC or Hingham Lumber Company currently employs up to 100 employees during our busy times, spring through early winter. During the new design, strong considerations are given for efficiency, ease of operation, and most importantly, maintaining strong safety standards. That is very important to us. HLC or Hingham Lumber Company procures products from dozens of delivery trucks per day. Some of these trucks measure up to 74 feet long and must back into a depressed loading dock for unloading. We unload materials such as LVL, or laminated veneer lumber, that measure up to 60 feet. I know there were some questions about the distance between the two buildings, but this is the area that we do all of our lumber unloading. So it does require some really spacious area to do this with safety. We load our trucks, which are 20 to 40 feet long with products that we deliver. We can be loading and unloading several trucks at the same time. And that we do. We deliver up to 50 deliveries per day, six days a week. That's in our busy times. All loading and unloading is performed while maintaining, again, very high safety standards. Hingham Lumber Company has been and will continue to be a good custodian of our Cohasset property. That's all I have, and thank you very much.
Bill, if maybe you could jump on and share the plan from the engineering perspective, that'd be fantastic, unless anybody has any questions of myself or Tom at this point. Okay, Bill, you're on mute.
Can everybody see that?
Yeah, I see it.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bill Buckley. I work for Bay Colony Group and I'm the project civil engineer for this Hingham Lumber expansion. And Jeff and Tom just went over a lot of the things that I usually go through. So I'm just gonna jump right into it. I think everybody knows the site and I'm not sure how many actually got up, say, Crocker Lane and looked down there to the right as you're coming up. But the site cuts, or what we're proposing to do, it cuts into the back of the existing area where they currently work now. So the light gray is the existing pavement. The red is the proposed building. This kind of brownish color is area that's not paved but is used for activities back there. And then our new building here, you can see in the kind of brownish outline. And then the heavier gray is the proposed pavement. And I apologize for my voice. So the site itself, I know it's hard to see here, but the site itself, along the back there, there's a wall that kind of holds up this portion of the site to the left, to the west, as you're looking at it. And it's about 10 feet high. This area in here is about elevation 61. Up top here is about elevation 71. It's currently a gravel road that comes in from Crocker Lane, which I'm outlining here with my arrow. It comes in, you can see through here, it's going, it goes through, or the building will be on top of where it goes. And then it kind of moves off to the left. And then this area down here is a cleared area that was being used for, I don't know, earth, some type of earth activities. And so what we're proposing to do, well, let me just, a couple more things. The other thing is, is in this area right here, you can see it, kind of a depression. This is a drainage swale or a drainage ditch that captures runoff off the side of this hill here. And it drains into a basin that currently exists in this general area. So it's just off of the existing pavement from Hingham Lumber. What we're proposing to do is to, and as Jeff pointed out, this piece of property is being sold to Hingham Lumber. So we'll be expanding this existing, this parking area into the rear, as you can see, the heavy gray. And this is where our 40,000 square foot building will be. So the main access to this building over here on the north side, there are four loading docks, which are depressed, which the trucks that Tom was describing, the 74-foot tractor trailers, which are pretty much the largest tractor trailers. You'll see they have the large 53-foot trailers. And then they have the crew cab that you can actually sleep in there. So they will be loading and unloading, for the most part, for this new building over on this side through these. Over on this side through these bays. But in addition, there are some other um. Areas of this facility that will be in use, this area in here is a small office component of it. And then the remainder of it is that, a distribution area that we were talking about earlier. And actually, subsequent to us submitting the, the, the um. The draft floor plan, which are the next-to-last sheet in your packet, um. That, we've added several doors down on this end, they're not loading docks, they're just overhead doors. Because we've changed the rack configuration inside the building, so this, these doors here will be used for um. A small, the. Tom, what are they called? The um.
Those.
Forklifts, the forklifts that come in inside the building, so it's not a vehicular access. But it's for forklifts access because there is um storage outside the building in between the two buildings. The um. The site currently has, it's currently served by a septic system that's down by the retail building that. Closest to Hangham Lumber, it's behind it, and that was built back in around nineteen ninety-two. And it was designed for a three thousand gallons per day facility, because at the time. Um, we wasn't sure what was going to be built here. The current design flow for the two buildings that are there is about fourteen hundred gallons per day. So this septic system will not be upgraded because it's, it's, has more than enough capacity to pick up the additional flow. So we're estimating an additional five people um working in this building um. On top of the um staff that's, that currently works there, so you're looking at from a title five point of view, about seventy-five gallons per day. So again, more than enough flow. And um, the septic system will be located in the front, it'll be pumping around to the side, and we've left a. A stub here to tie into because, as Tom said, they've constantly been thinking ahead. So even back in two thousand and two, when we did the initial design, we were looking at that. So that leads me also to um the water connection, so we'll be, this site will be served by municipal water. And just like I was just talking about, currently, this building here is by municipal water. But we've run a water line along the back of it, so there's a hydrant located here, and this is the water line that connects. And what we'll be doing is, we'll be moving this hydrant, because you can see right now. When this is built, it's gonna be in the middle of the, the driving area, so it can't go there. So we'll be moving it over in this area here, near this wall, which is um close to the loading docks to this facility. And then we'll be connecting a fire flow and a domestic flow into the new building in this approximate area. The um, the site, as I talked about earlier, has a lot of topography, and you can tell that by all these lines. So these lines all represent a two-foot elevation drop. And as I said, like, and approximately in this area here, it's about elevation seventy-one. And when you go down in this area here, it's forty-six. So a significant drop in that area, so we'll be bringing in a lot of material in order to bring this site up. In order to make it work, and when you're dealing with a. A commercial building like this, it's, it's not like a uh, when we're dealing with a smaller commercial building. Or with a, a home, for example, much smaller, where you can play with the elevation, so the rear of the house. Might be lower, you might have a walkout basement, that type of thing, when you're dealing with this. And pretty much the site has to be flat, there is some change in it, but it's not much, so we need to bring up. The site, you know, up to about fifteen feet at its, at its highest. And in order to maximize the use of the area, and in order to comply with the. The town um Conservation Commission regulations, which have a fifty-foot no-touch zone around wetlands. So when you see this, this lighter green, this lighter green, this lighter green. These are bordering vegetated wetlands, and Jeff pointed out earlier, we had flagged and certified by conservation last year. So what we're doing to stay out of that fifty-foot. Um, no-touch zone, in order to, and also order to, to minimize even work within the hundred-foot buffer zone. Uh, we'll be placing walls around the outside, so you can kind of see it. I mean, there's a wall here that will of course go away, be tying into the wall there. And going all the way around here, 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 all the way approximately to this here. It's anywhere from two feet high down in this area. And then it starts wrestle to getting higher, it's fourteen or fifteen feet in this area. And it's actually twenty feet high down in this area here. So there are, these are vertical walls, or, or pretty, pretty vertical walls um that are located there. Stormwater, which is always something that um I know planning boards are very interested in. So as I talked about earlier, part of this, there's a stormwater system on this piece right here. Um, that's this swale slash, kind of acts as a basin, and then it goes underneath the, the um path that I talked about. And then there's a basin up here, which overflows toward the wetlands to the north. So that is gonna be all taken out, and this will be taken out, so we need to take care of. This runoff that's currently coming down, as well as additional runoff that we'll be generating. For um our, our portion of the project. So we, we have a two, two areas here we're working, and we'll be continuing, this will be used, we'll be continuing to use this as a, a basin. Here, and then, because we're blocking it, we'll be putting a, a, a structure here in order to capture runoff or capture the. The runoff in that area, and it will be captured and run down here and into the site, into the uh. Our new basin, which is located in a relatively low area on the site, and you can see that it's. Um, you know, kind of in odd shape, and that reason for that is, is because we're trying again to minimize work. Um, within, within the wetland buffer areas, and we have to stay out of the fifty-foot no-touch zone. So we're building, it's a relatively small basin, but it's deep, I think it's about six feet deep at its deepest point. Um, you'll be able to access it, you know, as I talked about earlier, there's walls. We have to be able to go down there and maintain it, so we're creating a, a, a path. Uh, in this area here, which will also be held up by walls, so vehicles or small vehicles can go down there. And full maintenance on it, mowing, cleaning out trash, any trash that goes down there, um, things like that. The um, we did soil testing in that area, and we found that the soils were suitable. They're, they're not very permeable, but they are suitable for um. Infiltration on the site, this basin has been designed in accordance with the DEP stormwater standards, and then the local Cohasset bylaw. It handles flows from the two-year storm up into the hundred-year storm, and it controls the rate and volume of runoff. Toward the wetland line, which we've picked as our steady line. So that it is, the post-development is uh less than the pre-development, so it's, it'll be less runoff. Going toward the well and that's currently there, and we'll also be recharging. Um, into the groundwater regime by a, the volume that's required for these type of soils through that basin. One of the things we're doing here, in order to, um, it's called a low-impact development, I'm sure you've heard that term a hundred times. So one of the things we've done is we've taken the roof drains for the um, the new building. And we've separated them out from the, anything that hits the pavement, so a lot of times in the. You know, pre DEP stormwater standards day, you would just have a gutter that ran down into the pavement, into the parking lot. And then it would be picked up in the parking lot drainage and directed to wherever it was going. What we're doing here is, we're not allowing that roof runoff to, to mix with it. So we'll be taking that and as a separate drain system, I know it's hard to see, but. That runs around the building here, 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 and then it goes in right here, so you can see there's two inlets. This is for the pavement drainage, and this is for the um, the roof runoff drainage, and that's a low-impact development. Splitting the roof runoff because it's considered clean and putting it into the building. Um. We do have a, a stormwater, we have prepared a stormwater pollution prevention plan. So we've done a, a plan, which is actually sheet eight of the plan set that you've been given. Um, and we've also prepared a draft SWIP, which is in the stormwater report. That will be finalized once a contractor is chosen, and we can sit down with them and they will tell us, you know, how they. Think they'll be phasing it, and we can finalize that, and once that's finalized, we'll be filing with the uh EPA for a. NPT's permit, which was required for any type of altering more than one acre of um ground. And then, of course, we'll be also including the town within that process with um finalizing the, the um, the SWIP. And I think I'll stop at that point.
I just have a few to add, um, before we move on to Mr. uh Riordan, uh, if possible, Ms. Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you, um, not sure it was stated, but the proposed building is not to be open to the public. Uh, this is fully a site just for the employees and uh the distribution operation. Um, and the, I know that uh. Bill has kind of gotten into and explained a lot of the stormwater. Um, kept on this property, I just wanted to remind the board that. The Conservation Commission is going to be taking jurisdiction of uh the stormwater permit. Um, and ensuring that the town of Cohasset and DEP's uh stormwater bylaws and regulations are um abided by. Um, I did just kind of want to mention a little bit about the flow of kind of. Traffic on the site generally, or kind of like the use and how it's to be done, I, I think Bill mentioned this, but. Our trucks are gonna be kind of going along the top of that existing building. Uh, and it, they're gonna be um, i- if they're gonna be delivering l- lumber. To be utilized in the distribution of distributing that lumber off-site to third parties. Um, what's gonna happen is that the lumber's gonna be, the trucks, the trucks will pull in between the two buildings. The lumber would be offloaded and moved by forklift into the distribution facility. For the future loader, loading and distributing out. Um, if the product is not lumber and kind of large package items. The flow is gonna, the trucks will be directed towards kind of the, the narrow top of the um, uh, proposed building. Where um, they'll kind of pull into the um. To the, towards the side of that building and unload. And then they will continue around that building and exit. Um, uh, exit the site below the existing building as, as you see the arrow, so the traffic flow is. Designed to be one-way, but as you can see that there, there's kind of a bit of an area here. Um, and, and when you look at it, it almost appears. As if that, it, you know, maybe we're using too much space, but um. After the Conservation Commission meeting, we, we've done some swept analysis and turning radius analysis. Which we're gonna provide to uh Weston and Sampson, we know that they're gonna wanna see it. Um, and. The, the concept here is that we need enough space for trucks to kind of back up towards the building and then. Do a turn and go around the building, and um. In order to do that safely, it, this, this kind of extra space that you see on the site, which really is not extra, it's, it's only necessary space. Um, we're u- we're using as much as we can. Without offending the fifty-foot non-disturbance buffer strip by the Conservation Commission. So um, we've, we've held that line, uh, and they kind of asked us for a um. You know, to, to, to address what I'm addressing with you now, and I'll get into that with the commission as we go back to them, but. I just wanted to point out kind of the flow, how the operation works. And kind of why we need the space in order to traverse it safely and maneuver around things, so. Um, with that, we're hap- we're happy to answer any questions or move the hearing however you'd like, Madam Chair.
Um, all right, thank you very much. Um, uh, can I, can we hear from the uh peer review?
Excuse me, before we do peer review, can, can we um just, can they just go through the rest of their submission? Um, building elevations, that kind of thing, so we have, instead of just seeing what the site. Plan graphic is, we can see um the entire um package, I mean, I've seen it. But um, could the applicant just go through the, all the other drawings in the application?
Yeah.
In particular, I, I'd like to see the elevations, not, not that it's. Uh, a high design uh, uh, expectation for, for a metal building, it's just um. If, if you could, then the rest of the board can see those.
Yeah, I'll defer to uh Mr. Buckley who, who did the submission, I just wanted to uh point out that uh. The board was provided with a, with a floor plan. That um, since uh providing it, w- we have some, a, a slight tweak to on the south side of the building, on the interior. Um, and uh, uh, but in any event, um. Bill, do you, are you able to be responsive to um Mr. Brewer's uh request? And you're on mute.
Yes, let me, let me get the uh. Drawing up. Can we see that?
Yeah.
So this is the building, um, this is the. This is the north side with the depressed loading docks that we were talking about. This is the south side, excuse me, this is the south side, and this is where I was telling you that. We're gonna be adding some more doors along the south side, because we've changed the configuration of the inside. So the, the um forklifts will be coming in from this direction here. Um, and then this is the, the portion that faces. I think, yeah, Tom, yeah, this is the portion to the east that faces the existing um building that's there, and this would be the other side. It's kind of facing out into the woods.
That's correct. So, so the changes, just, just to be clear, the changes are to the south end. Right here, actually, it's opposite this end, these. Uh, overhead doors are now on the. Uh, south side, and there are four of them, not three, so this is now gonna be all metal. This area right here is gonna be, you're not seeing that, I.
No, which, which side?
I'm sorry, but the, the building that, the end of the building has, on this elevation. Shows no garage doors, will have four. Meanwhile, the elevation that has the office with the small windows, the three garage doors on the left will be uh eliminated. Again, it's uh for efficiency inside um that we found after talking with the racking company. Which is separate from the building company.
Is that satisfactory, Mr. Brewer?
Uh, yeah, are, are there racks that are gonna be on the outside of the building in addition to the inside? Um, on uh one side. Okay, and uh, can you just go through the rest of your submission, if there's any other en- engineering, um, engineering or, or plan drawings? Um, site signage, uh, that kind of thing, that's a part of your application that the planning board might be interested in. You have the signage, don't you, Billy?
Um, I do. Let me just. Let's see. Everybody see that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so as Tom was talking about here, and Jeff actually, so this is the, the flow. Which I was trying to show you, the flow would be coming in on the north side of that existing building. So this would be a, a sign here, has a deliveries warehouse sign, or direct. trucks in whatever direction they were going. And then, as Jeff pointed out, they're coming in between the two buildings. They would be, this is where trucks would come in and the large lumber would unload, and the trucks would go back out. And you can see this one-way sign. The, we don't want trucks going in here. We're trying to maintain a flow like this. So larger tractor trails would come in, pull out, back in. And then when they leave, they go this way. And that's where this exit sign is. It shows them how to do it. So they'd be coming in, coming around, and going out in this direction. And that's really the signage. There's no, no other signage here except for, there'd be handicap parking space signs on the, next to the building for these, for this space. But I think that's it. Is there anything else, Tom, that I missed on there?
No, because the, the traffic pattern right now with the existing building is, is the same exact traffic flow. So we have existing signs up there directing the traffic to go right when they come up to the existing building and then go left to get out. So we have signage, there's existing signage there. But with the new building, we're going to do the same thing around that perimeter, and that is have all the traffic going out to the left and exiting exactly the same way that we do it. So there's one continuous flow and there's no two-way traffic.
Can someone just give me the scale on the south side of that building where the, where you're directing traffic to go in a clockwise position? I don't have a sense of the scale between that building and that retaining wall and then the non-built-up area south of the train. No, no, further over to the, the southwest there. What is the width of that corridor from that side of the building to the retaining wall that, from what I understand, based on what I've heard, traffic will be directed through that?
It's 42 feet. So it's 42 feet along here, and it's 97 feet along this end here. And then between the two buildings, it's approximately 150 feet.
So given the size of these trucks, I'm just trying to get my head around how they're going to make a left-hand turn out of some of those sunken bays on the northwest side of that building to exit down that corridor on the left.
So this bay right here, this bay right here is not going to be able to be used by a tractor trailer that we were describing. That's going to be for panel trucks or smaller trucks in order to make that turn. These three bays, you can make that turn out through there. We've already run it, even this, the closest one, this one right here. This one does not, these three do.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Just one thing I'd like to hear, and I don't want to dissuade the progress through your presentation and from time for our peer reviewer, is lighting around this building. In the, in the general area, lighting in the building and perphrase to it.
So there are, there are no separate light poles on it. The lighting on the building will be just lights on the building that you would normally see. It's, there'll be no standalone lights.
Could I address that too?
Could I ask, can I continue that question, which is that this building is subject to dark sky concerns, which are the need to put lights on buildings of any type that produce a condition therfor, thereby, the, the light actually is aimed downward and it does not project outward. And it's a specific type of light, in, in particular on large buildings that are up high or have a significant facade in terms of size. That kind of lighting is essential to the kind of quiet nature of Cohasset and also the needs of the neighbors. So I, I don't know if anybody had mentioned that to you, but that should be something that you consider so that you're a good neighbor.
That's a great point, Ms. Chair, and we're going to provide a cut sheet to you so that you can understand the specific lighting fixtures and how they are dark sky compliant.
And, and if I could add, the existing warehouse, just like the, the new distribution building, will have overhangs, 12-foot around the perimeter and 20-foot, and all the lighting is down. So literally from above the building, you can't see the light bulb, but it's been fixed and we haven't had any issues or complaints for the 22 years. And we're going to use the same type of lighting. But all the roofs, you can see the outline around the perimeter of the, the lines, slash lines, but those, we have lighting underneath those pointing down.
Thank you.
We'll prepare a photometric plan for cement. We'll do that in for our next, when we make our revisions after our discussions with your peer reviewer, Conservation and the board.
Yeah, and just make sure there's sufficient detail in that, please. I'd just like to reiterate Ms. Glasmeyer's points with regard to the lighting. The height, the height of the lighting is, is important. The, you know, lighting that is at a 12-foot height, I'm not saying it is, but I heard 12-foot from Tom, would be, even if it was facing downward, it would create a glare for those on the ground and facing in the direction of it. So keep it low, keep it shielded, and, you know, keep the, keep the wavelengths that you choose long to avoid light leakage. And, you know, long wavelengths don't create the glare like a shorter wavelength light that creates that blue hue that just flies in the face of being any type of dark skies compliant.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Heinz. Can we move to the peer review?
I have, I have a tiny question. And just a clarification, so the entire design is designed for car and truck traffic only, right? So that the entire flow is, is, yeah, trucks and, and cars. So there needs to be no provision for pedestrian traffic at all? Nope. I see Tom.
Yeah, I know. There's no pedestrian traffic in that area. And no cars typically, because it's, it's typically tractor trailers and forklifts. So it's, it's specifically a place for, or an area to load and unload trucks. We don't allow pedestrian traffic out there. It's just, it's unsafe. So if somebody is walking out there, we ask them to please go back inside the drive-through warehouse. So there, it isn't a place that people come and walk around. It just doesn't happen.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And let's move on then for the peer review.
Good evening, Chair Glasmeyer, members of the planning board, and of course, the application team. Thanks very much for having us here this evening. You should be able to see my screen at this point with the brief presentation we'll go through. We've begun, we've initiated the peer review and we've started going through site design, civil site items. But that is to be completed. And so going to a little bit of comments that we have so far. So as has been discussed, this is the location of the site, proposed distribution structure. I understand it's in Zone 3A C, which is commercial district, and that we're talking about an area of roughly an acre, 40,500 square feet. This, there will be no retail use at the site from our understanding. And as was pointed out a couple of minutes ago, you know, it's really not an area where people will be walking around or anything like that. It's just really purely as a distribution center. We've already seen the site drawing or things very similar to it. But the structure that they're talking about adding here is 270 by 150 square feet. It's got a small office space in it, which is 400 square feet, 420 square feet, single-story. Parking for eight vehicles, which is intended as employee parking. Access via the existing driveway off of Route 3A with a one-way traffic flow around the building. We're reviewing it from the standpoint of zoning bylaw as well as site plan review, really just focusing on the site plan review as the town has determined that this is allowed as a by right permitted use. We reviewed these materials or are in the process of doing that, which include the application for the site plan review from December 10th. A letter to the Cohasset Planning Board regarding the, the site, the site plan itself, the stormwater management report, and a revised application for the site plan review from February 5, so earlier today. Preliminary findings on the north half of the warehouse, trucks will back in and need about 75 feet of clearance from the building. This was discussed earlier by the applicant's team. There also need to be room for fire trucks. So that's an item that we want to make sure that there's some sort of a turning template that is used to, to show us that fire trucks can make it through there successfully. Forklifts will load on the east side of the building and will need to be able to turn around for loading materials that could be 20 feet to 60 feet long. We understand there'll be 12 to 15 forklifts at the site. Conservation Commission would like new installations to remain outside the 100-foot buffer. But we understand that, you know, this presents some practicability issues. And, you know, we hope that the planning board takes that into consideration here, too. I know that the applicant mentioned both the 50-foot no-touch and the 100-foot buffer as, as part of the discussion earlier. This question about where delivery trucks will be parked, that, that we're, you know, looking forward to hearing the applicant address. And then we understand lumber will be loaded on the south side of the warehouse. Additional information needed, and I know this was documented in a letter from John Helen earlier today. Stormwater permit and NOI permit from Conservation Commission. Turning performance analysis for the fire department review. I mentioned that a moment ago. Water flow analysis for the proposed fire hydrants, not hydrogens. A sprinkler permit application for review, existing septic system size and location with the floor plans showing additional for flow that may be generated. And this would be, of course, for the health agent's review. I know that you spoke about that earlier and noted that the design flow would not increase very substantially. I think you said about 75 gallons per day. So that just needs to get documented. And that's it. And from our standpoint at this point, be happy to address any questions that anybody on the board of the applicant might have so far.
I would like to make a couple of comments. I'm not fully conscious of exactly how the traffic is going to go and whether or not with the size of the trucks and the, the flow of the trucks and the timing of the trucks, and trucks could be going in and trucks could be going out. I haven't heard very much about a traffic issue, but it does seem to me that there's a possibility that that should be something that is looked at much more carefully. Every time we've tried to do something in that particular area, and that happened a couple of times last year, we spent a great deal of time trying to work with the applicant to figure out how we would manage the traffic. Because you've got several cuts along the highway. You have people that are going as fast as 50 miles an hour, no matter what they say on the signs. The, the Hingham Lumber itself has people going in and out Saturdays and Sundays, or just Saturdays and Fridays are busy times, and you're a major provider of all types of construction materials. So I, I would feel a lot more secure if there was some type of analysis of what could happen. How, this running scenarios, thinking in terms of, for example, I would assume, Mr. McNulty, that you know pretty well, being in the business as long as you have, the flow of the, the vehicles that come and go. And if it turns out that there needs to be some kind of traffic management during the most intense time, we know how those things can be done. We need to think about them to begin with rather than having to kind of back into them, no pun intended, when we run into a problem.
Well, one of the, one of the things that's a good, good attribute, I think, for purposes of traffic, is there's one point which currently exists where all, all of the traffic going and to and coming from the site to the, to the public road. There's only one, there's only one point where that could occur. So it's not like we're going to be requesting any additional curb cuts or anything of that nature. The other thing I think that we have going for us is that this is the state highway. And that's a positive and sometimes a negative, right? Because it's, it's, it's designed, it's designed to accommodate trucks of this size. But on the other hand, we don't have, nor does the Town of Cohasset have any ability to direct the mast dot on what they do with that road as far as signalization or anything along those lines. And that's something that I think is a problem. Like, kind of like you pointed out in, in other areas of the town as well on this particular road. So kind of, in a sense, the applicant and the town's hands are tied there, but I, I think, I, I think one of the things that we'll probably do is take, take some time after this meeting to think about the operation and the coordination and timing. And that is something that is within our control. We could, we can get back to you on that and look into that particular issue.
That's a really good start. And you might also ask the town planner whether or not because that area has been intensely investigated over the last five years, that maybe there's a couple of traffic studies within them, I think there are. And you might then get a, a sense for how the logic worked and what we were concerned about. And then the discovery process, and then maybe even answers to what would be helpful for the organization.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just curious, what, which projects, do you happen to recall which projects those types of studies were performed for?
So there was a project that was going to put a piece of electronic equipment up at the top of the hill. It's a little further down, but it's in the same general vicinity. There was a plan to put a, initially a business condominium project, but then ultimately became the Rosano Construction Project up on the top of the hill. And that had a, had a, the, the actual architect of the first proposal had to do traffic analysis. I think there's one more that I remember, but I would suspect that Cassandra might also remember others.
Well, you know, thank you. One of the other items that's coming to mind also is even though we're creating this large building, the purpose of it is to, it, it, it's not intended, nor would it be utilized to create any more foot traffic to the site for the public. And the, the concept here is actually, whereas if you think about the existing And the the concept here is actually, whereas um if you think about the existing second building, which is that lumber. Kind of storage where you drive in, it's very unique um setup. Um that is designed um to accommodate um. Customers who wish to load their vehicles with items. This particular proposal is the exact opposite. This particular proposal is um. Allow us to deliver product directly to customers. And so the good news, uh and and we'll look into these issues, you're raising a fantastic point. The good news i- is that we're not creating any additional foot traffic to the property, any additional vehicle trips are not expected. Here, um so anyway, um.
I just had a.
Yep.
Um my uh in my fifty years of business and twenty-two years in Cohasset. Uh we have, I can say, you know, working six days a week. We have had minimal, like a couple of times when the yard was full that it created. Um some traffic issues. That was during COVID. When we had five thousand snow rakes that we sold in three days. We had people coming from all over the state to buy them. That it was ridiculous how many cars were in our yard, but that is a single or. Two-time, we saw two times that we've seen an instance like that. But uh Mr. Buckley was the original uh site designer. That's why he's back, um because. Uh with his design and the traffic that he proposed initially with our building, it's worked out really well and. Um traffic is a is a big part of our concern, um as as is safety. Um I don't anticipate this building, as as Jeff pointed out. Add traffic, as a matter of fact, I think it will really split the traffic up as far as truck traffic uh of delivery vehicles. It's going to give us a a more expansive area to work with as well as designate that product that is going to be distributed. Um much easier, much more efficient, it's certainly much safer, so the design is there to to make us a more efficient. Um and in in operation that it's much, it's, I'm not going to say much safer because we we really deal in a way that is safe. It is a major concern of mine. Um we never want to see anybody get injured. We certainly don't want to cause traffic. Um but over the last, even the last five years as our business has grown, I have not seen any substantial increase uh of. Uh you know, or increase in traffic at all, so. Um yeah, we we we've kept that in mind uh in the design and that's, that's why we had Mr. Buckley back. Um I I had no idea when we first opened twenty-two years ago how we were going to be. Um but I have not seen any dramatic uh traffic issues at all um during my twenty-two years being there.
Uh um I'm going to ask one last question and then I'm going to turn it over to Kevin. Um I think you might or might not might not be aware of our ledge removal. Um bylaw. And it could be something that's valuable to you rather than an irritant. Uh you're going to have a lot of fill you have to produce and you might also have. Fill that you produce and you need to get rid of, right? Typically, people have to move it off the site. So have you done any investigation about the spatial distribution of the ledge? Along in the property or as you build the building, what 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 you might find because that could. Have a significant positive impact if you're gonna, if you if you have to move it and you need to, it sounds like you have really need a lot. To actually fill that fifteen-foot depth that you might find it on the site.
So uh ju- just briefly, before you jump in there, Tom, because I know you have a a depth of knowledge of the actual site. Um I just wanted to point out to you, Tom, that the uh the ledge, the land alteration, ledge removal bylaw, and correct me if I'm wrong. Madam Chair, is um specifically designed to deal with exposed ledge. Um and so the it 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 um. The question is, are 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 we, are we, are we removing or proposing to remove any exposed ledge? Um in connection with this.
That is correct and um uh and the ability to retain it on the site is uh essential. So you might just be one of those places that actually have a reason to do to do that. Um all right, Kevin.
Oh, I I thought there was going to be an answer. Is there any exposed ledge on the site that the applicant is aware of?
Not that I know of, and and we had a geotechnical study done where they drill a a number of holes. Uh and we didn't find any, we didn't find any there.
I can't say that I'm familiar with any in that area myself, but um you guys are more um. Familiar with the nuances of the site. I just wanted to provide uh the chair with an answer to that. Um my question pertains to um discussion of retaining walls. Um in your presentation, and it was probably towards the front end of it. It sounded like a discussion was of retaining walls anywhere from two feet high, and if I wasn't mistaken, retaining walls of forty-foot height. Um a forty-foot-high retaining wall is approaching a four-story building. And I would like to hear some additional discussion as to whether I heard correctly and there's going to be retaining walls approaching that height. Um or or what? If you could just provide some clarification, that'd be helpful.
For my notes. I'm sorry, if I misspoke, it's it's twenty feet is the maximum height and that would be over um. Near the northwest corner of the existing building with a wall would be wrapping, so it starts. That's twenty feet down in the southwest and then as it wraps, the highest point is twenty, uh two feet, I'm sorry. Two feet down in the southwest and then it, as it moves to the north and the east, it's twenty feet maximum.
Um it was there any consideration or provision for stepped-back walls? Um I know on some other sites. Um in the general area, considering the topography of it. Um step-back walls were a consideration given um. Uh you know, the the heights, um um uh uh thank you for the correction that we're not talking forty-foot high, but even a twenty-foot-high wall has some height to it. And you know, anyone falling off a step ladder that's over six-foot high can get seriously injured. You know, if we're talking about. Retaining walls in excess of double digits, um there's often um a preference for. Uh replacing those uh with step-back type walls where you can actually use shorter dipped. Shorter height retaining walls, um but perhaps more of them in a steps pattern.
They did the re- we we did, we did not, well, we're, again, what I was trying to point out earlier is, you know, we're trying to. Uh maximize the amount of space over in that area because that's the area where we're going to have. Those really large tractor trailers pulling in and maneuvering and backing in. So and then we have on the other end of it, we have the fifty-foot no-touch. We're trying to stay. We're not trying, we are staying outside of it, we're also trying to stay as far away from the welllands as we can, so I mean, we'll look at that. And here he is, I'll take another look at it. Um we have a structural onboard now. And what we'll do is we'll take a look at some areas, maybe where we can take advantage of that without compromising the the issue we have with. Having space for tractors, trailers to do it.
And and just, just to piggyback on that, Kevin, the uh. Um the building code uh regulates walls of a certain height, uh and so the the building inspector. Is going to have to ensure that um you know, the code uh is is complied with with respect to. I think any walls that are in excess of four feet high, let alone twenty, so um. Just wanted to jump in, not sure that that matters or you care, but um that I pointed out, thank you.
No, I appreciate the additional information with regard to that, thank you. And and I just might add, you know, as you look at these options, I haven't heard other than traffic flow um. Why the building is positioned and the orientation it is. Um you know, I assume you're you're, that's a part of the consideration with the design. Um but it seems to me like you're not necessarily wed to this orientation as you've shown on your plans with this kind of. I I guess it could perhaps be a northwest-southeast orientation along the long axis for this building. I I I, you know, you're left with a lot that you have and you got the constraints to it, whether it's from Concom or whether it's from us with our interests. As as a board here. Um I I think you want your design team to to really look at. Your design and make sure you're maximizing it, and I'm just, you know, coming from someone that's not doing the design for you. You know, just make sure that building, as you have it positioned, is the right orientation for your traffic flow, for your buffers. For a buffer that would be beneficial of a hundred-foot buffer versus just keeping it out of the fifty-foot buffer. You know, to make this more palatable to the boards that this is going to be in front of, and I'll leave it at that.
Uh thank you, Mr. Heim. Uh Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments um based on the submission. The first is the drawings. Were uh were labeled uh that the zoning district was technology business. And um I think everybody knows that's been changed to three A dash C. If you're going to be updating the the documents that you submitted for this application, then I would say just change, change those. If you're, if you're not going to be updating the documents and submitting them, then I'd ask that you submit a letter. Uh confirming that uh what the, what the underlying zoning is now as opposed to when you started working on this project. Because I know that's a fairly recent change and we've had some issues and problems with that.
Yeah, yeah, we're we're uh all over that, that's in process, thanks.
Yeah, great. Uh uh second, and 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 on the positive side, I I personally. Um I think that uh having this business in in Cohasset is, has been really great for the construction industry and the support. And service that uh the that the business uh has been able to provide over a couple of decades and I'm. You know, just like, I think it's a, it's a great function to have within our, within our community. Uh for um the use and benefit of uh homeowners and co- contractors and businesses alike, I think it's. It's great, so um uh improving the business model. So that it's more robust and can provide more diverse services, I think makes sense is, again, the reason for. For looking at this um new building. Um uh and and I know, uh I I'd like to just um the 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 safety and signage issue, no public. Um um going in the back is probably useful signage if 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 it has to be a little bit of overkill. In terms of the signage, I think that 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 doesn't bother me. Um just so everybody in terms of the members of the public know not to, not to drive back there. Um following up on Kevin's uh comment about the retaining walls, interestingly enough, I think we have a three-foot height. Uh limit for retaining walls within the, within the setback. Uh and then taller retaining walls have to be. Um you know, if you have a, if you have a twenty-five-foot rear setback, the tall or over three feet have to be um. Um a- away from the property line, so um Kevin's suggestion that that perhaps stepping the the walls. Uh as it is a dual function, it allows. It allows uh increased safety where you're not going to fall over a twenty-foot embankment. I mean, I know this presumably there's going to be a guardrail there, but. Um uh in addition, it can be closer to the property line. Um so that, so the geometry of that may, looking at the geometry of that may be a benefit. Um to to what you're trying to do for the turning radius in that tight um northwest corner. Um uh one other uh point would be that the the A and R uh plan where you're taking this land from. Uses frontage uh out on um three A. Um or the parcel that this is uh this is being built on. Uh so um maybe this is for for the engineer and um counsel. Uh just make sure that if you have an orphan, if you create an orphan lot up on the hill, that um. Uh you want to tie it into some existing lot that has some kind of existing frontage somewhere. Um and I think, uh let's see, a couple more points is Massachusetts now has um a a pretty robust. Um energy code and uh I'm sure you know about it, that that um. Requires commercial buildings to ha- to have solar-ready areas. Now, um your your out-of-state metal building engineer might not know this, uh but I I I take a note down that uh. The solar-ready area has to also have a five-pound per square feet, and confirm this, don't take my word for it. Five pound per square foot uh loading for those solar panels that might be installed on the building. And you know, conduits up and down, and there's a forty percent reserve area that should be free of obstruction, stink pipes, things like that, that um. Uh that might be on the roof, so I mean, in the future, you could. Uh potentially uh have a an electrical uh uh an electric cash machine on this roof. But you can't blow it by not um getting the extra five pounds, so there's 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 snow load. That the engineer would be able to find in the building code. Um there's his own deadload of the components of the building. And then there's this extra five pounds of of live load for the solar panels that um could easily be missed because. Um it, the 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 energy code isn't in the building code anymore, refers you elsewhere. Um so just make sure your your um building engineer doesn't, doesn't move uh, uh doesn't miss that. Um that important point. Uh and then lastly. Uh I've noticed, and and I can't say I've noticed recently, that occasionally there are material deliveries that come in. Uh after your hours and uh trucks park out on three A. Obviously, you can't park more than one truck there. Um and I'm wondering if that would be more likely to happen, and I don't know if it's a safety concern, but. I don't know if that would be more likely to happen under your new business model or or less let, uh certainly wouldn't be less likely, but I'm wondering, is. Is there a system that you could put in place so that that would eliminate um trucks parked out on three A? Um uh overnight, waiting for the for the gates to open in the morning. Those are my comments, feel free to respond in any way you want.
If I, if I could comment, uh Mr. Brewer, one of the things you mentioned is solar. Uh yes, that that's an option we've been looking at, uh as a matter of fact. I think it's beyond the state now, I think it's almost a national code that metal buildings have to be designed for solar. So our building is designed for solar, I haven't mentioned it simply because. Um with all the tariff talk, um the manufacturers or the the uh solar companies cannot give us a price, number one. Nor can they address um the rebate that has been available. There's a thirty percent credit or rebate uh from the federal government. No one knows at this time if that's still available. No one knows today or even three, four months ago. What the price of the panels are. They are, I believe somewhere around ninety percent of them manufactured in China. So uh that's an issue, um and it can be a very expensive issue. Um regarding the lumber trucks, yeah, that that's not something we look to do because the long trailers are sometimes. Uh I don't think they impede traffic, but they do get close to three A. Um we ask that when they come late at night, um that they uh go into the uh Cohasset um. Old Colony Parking Lot, there's typically plenty of room there and we open uh for truck traffic at five-thirty in the morning. Um unfortunately, a lot of our lumber, uh speaking about tariffs, come from Canada. Um and a lot of these are French-speaking people and they they pick up a load. And although we we talked to the broker, uh when we purchased the material with notes, if it comes in after four o'clock and before five-thirty. Please park over here. Uh some follow those directions, uh some of them don't. So I don't anticipate with the new building that there'll be any additional trucks like that, but those are the ones that don't get the message, unfortunately.
Uh is that satisfactory, Mr. Brewer?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. Uh it's now time for public um comments and I can see we have one. Which I can read and we can get a response and then uh. Uh our planner will uh carry that out. Uh so the que- first question was how much additional traffic? Will there be in uh or on three A expectation?
I thi- I think we've already addressed that with your question. Um we don't expect that this business use. Adds any additional trips to the property. That's, I think, probably the best way we can answer. I mean, there's going to be some deliveries, but there's a, there's a metric for. Um tying in, say, retail use to foot traffic and none of that's applicable here. Um the best way I can answer that at the moment, I'm just wondering, that question was posed. Um by someone, I think it said something like B's iPad and it would be helpful. Cassandra to know um the uh name and address of the individual requesting that information. Such that if if that person is in the neighborhood. such that if if that person is in the neighborhood, um we might be able to have a a better response um for that individual.
Yes, I had reached out via the Q and A and requested that they provide their name and address. Um, there was an additional question that the way that Zoom works, if you respond to your question, it puts it into another category. Um, so the other question that the same person asked was what will the effect of construction operations and additional traffic be on the wildlife directly behind this new building?
Bill, I think you can answer that. And um by the way, the uh the individual, Barbara Buckley, um, thank you for posting your name. And Bill Buckley, probably no relation, probably can answer that question on the issue of uh wildlife.
Well, really, I can't. But I I will um I will say that, you know, if you I have you ever have an opportunity to go back there as members, um that area is heavily disturbed. Um, so I'm not sure what kind of wildlife you'd you'd have. It backs up to a really substantial large area. I I think it's the old uh, is it Wampatack State Park? So I know it's like the butter is a D Department of Conservation and Recreation, and I think it stretches all the way.
Trustees of reservations there as well.
Trustees of reservation, yeah. So I'm not sure how much this will take up. Again, we're talking about maybe an acre of land that's on the side of a hill, and the bottom of it has been heavily disturbed, and is already a stormwater basin and a path through there. That's just a layperson's discussion. It's not.
There's no vernal pool or any protected wildlife habitat out that area, otherwise you would have had accounted for that on your notice of intent filing, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, and that area behind that expansive area, we're talking more than twenty acres um backs up to if if you've ever taken the, if you've ever parked in the MBTA parking lot and walked on the path that goes back there towards Wampatack State Park, that's that path runs adjacent to the land um that that remaining twenty acres, so to speak, that's behind this area.
Right.
Um, uh, Ms. Cassandra, do we have further comments from the public?
There are no comments in the Q and A, and nobody has their hand raised at this time.
All right. Then um
I I may take that back. Barbara had another comment that says, I walk that path all the time. There is a great deal of wildlife.
Agreed.
Um, is this more a statement than it is a question, or is there a problem that's related to the statement that you've made? I'm saying that to the member of the public, Ms. Buckley. And you you don't have to answer that if you don't wish.
Uh, I I I'm behalf of perhaps with regard to that question, I will add, it comes back also to lighting and lighting trespass. It doesn't just affect people in the neighborhood or people looking for dark skies and other parts of town, um if there's trespass and leakage. Trespass can also extend outside the confines of what you're trying to illuminate, whether it's a path, whether it's uh in adjacent area uh for a road. Um, if it expands outside those areas, then it can affect wildlife. So if we've got vernal pools or we don't have any, if we have wetlands or we don't have any, if we have a field area or something like that, yeah, there's going to be wildlife, and they operate after dark. And if there's light trespass in there, another reason to please look seriously at the um dark skies initiative, because it's not just light trespass, it goes into people's eyes as glare or up into the sky to um obliterate the um views up up there. It can also be lateral trespass, and if it's in this area, this site where there is wildlife, they can be affected by the lighting at night if it is allowed to trespass.
That's a great deal. We'll take that very seriously. It's a great question or comment, and uh we'll give you a photometric plan. We'll be careful to be dark sky compliant and so forth.
Um, planning board members, peer reviewers, anybody have further comments? Otherwise, I'd like to uh read the relevant elements of the bylaw that relate to this hearing. Uh, and and I'm doing that for my colleagues and as well as all of the members that are here uh besides us. So please bear with me. As a reminder to both the board members for the knowledge of the public, when reviewing applications for site plan review under section three hundred dash one-two-seven of the zoning bylaw, the board shall consider the following factors in its review of the project. Adequacy of provisions for water drainage, sanitary waste disposal, including sound, site buffers, storage, and disposal of refuse and snow, screening of objectionable features such as dumpsters or storage areas from adjacent streets, and the protection of natural resources, convenience and safety of vehicles, vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site, including parking and loading areas, and the safe of safety of curb cuts in relation to exiting traffic conditions on adjacent streets, and finally, the compliance with all other applicable requirements of the zoning bylaw. The planning board may disapprove of site plan only if the board finds that the site plan review application is not complete in accordance with the site plan review regulations, or that proposed use and development of the site doesn't comply with the application, applicable use and development requirements of the zoning bylaw, or no reasonable conditions can be devised to ensure public health, safety, and welfare by eliminating or reducing any significant detrimental impact that would result from development of the site as proposed. Um, uh, I would like to have us take a inventory of the sets of issues that are still outstanding. I don't have to actually do it myself if the um peer review, as well as the planner, as well as the applicant have already jotted down the notes that will be be required to be responded to um and will uh have us end ending in a position of um uh extending this meeting to another date and time for the answers to the questions that remain outstanding.
I guess I'll jump in. Um, we fully expected that uh there would be a continuance. Uh, we don't, we don't think uh it it uh we needed a lengthy period of time for the continuance. Um, but we're running up uh, you know, I I would recommend recommend a month uh simply because um we still have a procedure and a process with the Conservation Commission, so uh that that additional two weeks would probably uh be helpful and beneficial to us. We I have a list. I'm more than happy to um uh check in with Cassandra and make sure my list meets her list, and we'll get you some information.
Great, thank you very much. Um, then uh we uh Cassandra, can you look on the calendar and see what a date and time in the near future could be made available?
Sure. So your next two meetings are February twenty-sixth and then March fifth, which is the following week. Um, after that, I believe you're looking at March twenty-sixth.
All right. Um, so for this evening, the public hearing for one-six-five Chief Justice Cushing Highway is now continued to one of those dates. Would you like to make a choice?
Please, uh, March fifth sounds like a good date.
We
All right.
We usually vote on the con- continuation of the public hearing.
Yes, that's correct. So may um the individual members of the board uh uh make a motion to continue the hearing to the date of March fifth. Do I hear a second?
Motion, motion to continue to March fifth of this public hearing.
Second.
Uh, uh, alphabetical order, please.
Uh, Clark Brewer, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
And Heim, I.
David Smith, I.
Thank you. So we will see um this project in the future.
Uh, very much appreciated. Thank you so much. I'm me on, I'm I'm on for the next hearing as well.
I will not remove you then. Thank you for letting me know.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
So we are now on to uh, in this instance, um, the next uh hearing is a public hearing for a land alteration special.
That's uh that's correct, and and Jeff Hassett will be in on this one as well.
Amy might have just frozen a bit.
Amy, you're frozen.
Read the public hearing notice aloud. Pursuant to MGL chapter forty-a and three hundred dash nine dot dot one of the Cohasset zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform webinar ID eight-eight-nine-eight-six-three-five-eight-six-nine-zero, passcode four-two-one-nine-three-four on Wednesday, February fifth, two thousand and twenty-five at six-thirty. Well, actually, the the time is uh not correct. Uh, for land alteration, special permit for property being shown on the accessories map uh D four dash zero-one-four dash zero-nine-zero thirty-one Dolan Lane, Cohasset, Massachusetts. The application is the removal of six hundred and twenty-eight square feet of ledge for construction of a driveway. The application is submitted by Lot A Dolan Lane Realty Trust, P O Box one oh one zero-three Cohasset, Massachusetts. Copy of the application and plans and accompanying documentation are on file for viewing at the town clerk's office at Cohasset Town Hall, forty-one Highland Avenue, Monday through Thursday, eight AM to four-three, four-thirty PM, and Friday, eight AM to twelve PM. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting HTTPS colon duh uh dash dash CohassetMA.org five-two-four dash active dash PB dash applications. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the appu- on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated. I'd like to say that this public hearing, as well as the next one, is for the relief of a land alteration special permit. Recently, the land alteration section of the bylaw was amended at special town meeting. This new amendment is in effect and is relevant to both hearings. The land alteration section regulates clearing activities, earth removal associated with land development, and exposed ledge face alteration associated with land development. In both cases, the relief is sought for the third option, exposed ledge face alteration. If a special permit is granted, the quantity volume in cubic yards of material removed at the surface and below grade shall not exceed that required to build the permitted accessory structures. Additionally, where feasible, the planning board may accept alteration of exposed ledge face in one area of a lot if non-exposed ledge elsewhere on the same lot can be exposed on a one-to-one ratio and present a similar aesthetic impact to the public or property owner that alters the area provided. Um, with that, we will commence with the public hearing and ask that the applicant speak first, then the peer review, ask members of the of um the committee or of the of the planning board, and then ask for public audience comments. And the planner will assist with the timekeeping and reading public comments. I will say our last um discussion went uh significantly longer than I anticipated, and so we want to keep that in mind as we go forward.
Sorry, I spoke too long earlier.
Uh, no, it, this was a big deal. It's a big project.
Yeah.
Uh, so may we have the applicant present and uh make your case.
Jeff, before you begin, um, Carolyn, is there anything in particular that we need to do, whereas this is a special permit and um Clark isn't a butter for this hearing?
Thanks for for the reminder, Cassandra. Um, Clark, you can certainly speak for yourself, or I'm happy to discuss. Um, as as folks may or may not know, uh, Clark Brewer actually is in a butter to thirty-one Dolan Lane, and ordinarily, that would mean he would have to recuse himself from participating in this matter. However, as you see tonight, there are only three permanent members of the board and an associate member present. If uh Clark does not participate this evening, then we don't have the requisite four members um needed to issue a special permit. So the rule of necessity would allow that Clark can participate in this matter so that you have four voting members. But I think it is important for the public and also the applicant um to be aware of that. And if there's any objection, I think the the applicant should make it known now.
Um, tha- thank you, uh, Ms. Murray. Um, it looks like we uh certainly don't have a choice because without a quorum, uh, we can't uh the the board can't consider this. Um, uh, but having said that, we have absolutely no um uh objection to uh Mr. Mr. Brewer participating. We we uh he's obviously uh somebody of high high character who's been uh at uh at on the planning board for a long time, and uh there's no reason to think that there would be ever uh any issue with Mr. Brewer, so we're good with it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so the chair read, just for purposes of the public and anyone else, um this land alteration bylaw is located in section nine-point-one of the zoning bylaw, and in particular, with respect to the the subsection that we're coming in under, the exposed ledge. Um, that is section F, as in Frank. Um, and uh the chair basically just read from the three paragraphs that concern that particular special permit provision. Um, is, in my knowledge, this is probably the first application uh that this planning board is considering under this new bylaw, and so it's new for all of us. Um, I'm, uh, this is a single-family, uh, this is a ledge removal, exposed ledge removal being proposed in connection with the construction or proposed construction of a single-family dwelling. And I'm just going to turn it over to uh to Jeff to explain the project and what it looks like and what's happening.
All right. Thank you, Jeff, and good evening, everyone. Um, I'll share my screen and go over the engineering.
It's silly, bud. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so uh this property is a thirty-one Dolan Lane. It's currently undeveloped and is located at the end of Dolan Lane. Dolan Lane is here. This is the access to the property. And the property is four-point-three acres, of which four acres are upland, and the site uh runs off either to an Ivy Isolated Vegetated Wetland on the property or in a southerly direction to a be- a larger BV
I wanted to see if you
located offsite. The project is for the construction of one single-family home, and uh the assoc- associated driveway, um, grading, utilities, et cetera, that you would expect. The limit of work is one-point-one acres, leaving the other three-point-two acres undisturbed. So this land alteration special permit is for the removal of the exposed ledge, and the only area of of exposed ledge that will be removed is along the access portion of the property, specifically here, highlighted in yellow, and it's six hundred and twenty-eight square feet. Um, this area, the the grade, looking at the existing contours, which are the grayer dash lines, the grade comes up, and then it drops off steeply here along the ledge face and then back down, and then it's relatively flat through this area. The because of that, this ledge is not visible from Dolan Lane and through the woods. It's really not visible from um Wheelright Park, not not the driveway anyways, because it will be lowered. The um the ledge is going to, that will be removed from this area, will be used to build up the grade here. So along, this is really, and do, the reason for the ledge removal is that because the grade falls off, the driveway can't be too steep as it comes around that corner. So we're taking a cut through here and then using that material right here to build up the grade, and there'll be a four-foot-tall stone wall right along the limit of work here. So that those boulders that come out or blasted stone that come out of the ledge will be perfect for building that wall. Um, and again, that material will be used onsite. Um, inside inside the house itself, you can see with the existing contours, it's a bit of a valley that comes right through here with a higher point here and a higher point here. And um so on this edge of that end, end of the house, the existing grade is sixty-six. and fifty eighty on this end. So it drops off about eight feet. It works out perfect that we're going to construct the house right in that low area, bring up some fill into the front yard, fill in the backyard to match the grades in the front and the back, match the grade on this side and have a natural walkout on this side. So for that reason, there won't be any ledge removal associated with the home itself. So we do believe that we designed this to be the intent of the ledge removal bylaw in that in that we're minimizing disturbance and minimizing the ledge to be removed. We did adjust the driveway slightly with this application. Previously, the driveway went a little further north and made more of a sweeping turn out like this. But once we located the individual ledge outcrops, we decided to shift the road about fifteen feet or the driveway to get it away from these ledge outcrops here. This project has been approved by conservation. They issued an order of conditions, stormwater permit. They it's also been approved by the Board of Health and the property owner has applied for a building permit. Not aware of the bylaw change, I kind of flushed out the fact that we had now have were required to get the special permit from the planning board. And we also received some peer review comments last week that we addressed. So with that, I'd be glad to pass it back to you and I can attempt to answer any questions.
If I might jump in really just to reiterate, I I think Jeff mentioned it, but there's no answer. There actually, there will not be any ledge removed from the site and brought down Dolan Lane elsewhere into Cohasset. Any of the ledge that's removed would be utilized and re repurposed on the site for things like retaining wall and stuff like that. Additionally, there's probably about, I don't know, maybe about a twenty foot area at the top of Dolan Lane where it kind of bends where the frontage of this is located. And that area is a perfect area where there's certainly no, no exposed ledge and and easy to kind of level off and end stage so that so as to try and minimize disruption. I see that the butter, who is the owner of twenty five Dolan Lane, is on the call tonight. And I know that she's expressed some concerns about, you know, any safety issues involved in that. And I just wanted to indicate that we intend to use that front portion of the stage. So also, we don't expect, and I don't know, Jeff, if you could maybe just speak to whether you think that there would be any impact on the adjacent septic system at twenty five Dolan. That'd be helpful, but otherwise, those are the only extra points I had. Thank you.
And no, there wouldn't be. There would not be any impact on the neighbor's septic system or their property. Prior to any work, the property lines will be staked out. Erosion control barriers will be installed along that limit of work to define the area. And there won't be any traffic going over the property line at all.
Okay. And the that septic system is that is that system? Is there a topographical difference, Jeff, to your knowledge, relative to the ledge that's being removed?
So the the grade where the ledge is being removed over here, we're higher in elevation and lowering the grade, which will still be higher in elevation than their backyard in this area. So, yeah, and and then the grade falls off. This portion of the property is lower than their septic system.
And and I, Madam Chair, I I know that the town hired an engineer to review this, Pat Brennan. We've seen his comments, Jeff's addressed them, and I I didn't. I don't see that he's here tonight, but should you have any questions relative to our exchange with him? We're obviously here to answer that for you.
Can I ask that you state the concern and then respond with the the response that took place as a result of the comment?
From Pat Brennan's review?
Correct.
Yeah, I have a copy of his letter here, too. All right. So his first comment is, based on our review of the plans, we believe that the proposed removal of the ledge is necessary for the construction of the driveway and the proposed driveway is located to minimize the amount of ledge removal required. I would agree with that. More of a statement. Second comment is, a calculation showing the proposed volume of ledge to be removed should be provided. That volume was provided. It's two hundred and thirty cubic yards. And thirdly, the applicant should investigate whether there is non exposed ledge on the property that could be exposed at a one to one ratio. The answer to that is yes, there is ledge that we could expose, but the problem is the property is currently a wooded undeveloped property. So in my opinion, it would be counterintuitive to, you know, clear vegetation to expose the ledge. And it's going to be in an area that's only visible to the applicant. And that that goes the extent of their comments.
All right. So the next set of comments will be, we do, we don't have, we have the comments from the peer review. And so we will now move to the comments of the planning board members. Do board members have comments?
Kevin raises hand.
Okay, I can't see that with all the diagrams. Sorry.
Yeah, I I might just add that I think that there is limited utility in a one to one swapping for the reasons that Mr. Hassett explained.
Are there other comments from members?
Yeah. One comment I would have is that this plan, I saw another plan that had some screening between twenty five Dolan Lane. Oh, there, there it is. I just wanted the other board members to see that there's a site, a site plan that shows screening. Maybe this is more of a large home review type of issue than than the ledge bylaw, but there is an effort on the part of the the applicant to to provide screening for as a butter.
Yeah, but that is
that was the only
this is the plan we submitted to you and the plan that was approved by conservation with the screening.
Right.
I just showed you I had simplified just for this presentation purpose.
Of course, I understand. I just wanted the other members of the board to see that. I don't have any other comments.
Other board members' comments? I will just make a a comment. I went to the site yesterday and walked with Mr. Hassett Hazard to see the situation and the degree of presumed disturbance and the plan that they have made is essentially a plan that's a compromise that will be, I think aesthetically effective in reutilizing the the granite after it's extracted. Any other comments? All right, then I will move on to the public. Cassandra, would you mind being the coordinator of this?
Sure. Would you like me to read aloud the comments that are in the Q and A?
Please.
Okay. First, we have Barbara Buckley from two seventy two North Main Street commented, I vehemently oppose this project. Residents of this area of North Main Street have been subjected to weeks of pile driver noise for several hours per day for weeks the last two summers. The incessant noise requires closing windows and staying inside the house. Please be a good neighbor and make a new plan for your driveway.
I'm, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The the applicant does not, you know, the goal here is to get underway with this work such that I don't anticipate that there would be this type of ledge removal in in the summer months when we would expect windows to be open. Also, it's a relatively small, small amount of ledge, I I would say. I I don't, I don't think that the job is gonna, is gonna. Jeff, you can speak to the what you think the duration of the job would be.
I I can't tell you exactly how long it's going to take until they get in there and start hammering. You know, sometimes it comes right apart. Sometimes it's a little more stubborn. The intent is to hammer it, and if it doesn't come right apart, though, to then blast it, which is a bit. If it's going to take a while, you're better off just getting in there and blasting it and being done with it.
And if you were to blast, I mean, that's a that that word is a, you know, it's it sounds alarms, right? Because it's a blast. But that's that's something that I wanted to remind the board. I think the board understands that that if there would be blasting, it it would be, it is a statutorily regulated activity which is done in close coordination with certain town officials and there are surveys done and so it's not something that, you know, you just go out and 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 blast and it's going to be, you know, multiple days and so forth is that that would be an activity that would be very well regulated.
Thank you. The second comment is from Jack Buckley of two seventy two North Main. The numerous questions. If the total removal is six hundred and twenty eight square feet, what is the rate of removal per hour? What is the decibel level of the hammer? What is the radius of the noise and what would the proposed work hours be? In other words, how much noise for how long and how many homes in the area are expected to be impacted by the noise? And then just adding on to Barbara's last comment, she stated, the blasting is what our neighbor promised last summer, and yet the pounding continued for the summer.
Yep. I mean, I can't commit to a timeframe. The intent is to get it done as quick as possible, get the drive, get access in and start building the house. It's not a huge, it's not a huge removal like for a foundation of a house. It's just one section of the driveway.
Thank you. Are there other comments from the public?
At this time, there are no other comments in the Q and A, and nobody has their hand raised. Oh, just kidding. Jack asked, what is the radius of the noise?
I I really can't answer that.
He also asks what the decibel level would be.
I mean, again, same. I I don't know the decibel level for hammering ledge.
You know, there are factors that that affect the issues that Jack has expressed concern about, such as the density of of a, you know, wooded forest and the topography, things of that nature. I just thought I'd I'd throw that out there. That's probably one of the factors. I dealt with this particular issue of decibel levels in other public meetings and those are the types of things that are cited by acoustical engineers that impact those types of issues. And so you know, North Main Street, there, there's, there are some topographical changes and some woods in between. I I have no idea scientifically how that would impact, but just thought I'd throw that out there as an observation.
I would also make a comment because where I live, we had a series of five houses built in a very short period of time. And I investigated the existence of or the ability to create a here, a sound regulation that related to ground disturbance and it is rarely used, actually, even though it is, it is quite disturbing. There's no doubt about it. And I agree with Jeff that the alternative, which is blasting, is quick and and certainly much less difficult on the part on the citizens around any type of project like that. But we do not have a sound requirement. And as a result, it is up to the individual whose property is being affected to make a determination how the the rocks will be broken.
I would add, too, that there's going to be set hours if if there is hammering of the rock, it would be done during set business hours. It would not continue into outside of those. I would not expect the applicant to retain a contractor that would do that. You know, as far as how the sound's going to carry, it's could depend on the time of year it's done. You know, in in the summer, you got windows open, but then you have leaf on, so the sound may not carry as far through a wooded environment. But if you got windows open, then you hear it. In the winter, you got windows closed, but then there's leaf off, and it might just carry better in the cold, quiet, you know, winter days that we have. So the contractors working on this, you know, should have the requisite hearing protection to they can protect themselves. But to say that the sound would not carry beyond that, you know, it's to be expected. There there will be some carry outside of the immediate work area of sounds. And and like has been said already here, there's a percussion hammer and it's bang, bang, bang until it starts breaking apart. And it's hard to know what the competency of that rock is until you start working it. And, you know, there's trade offs to doing it that way versus blasting where you have, you know, sometimes a wider field of influence because you're talking about actual seismic movement through the ground and not just auditory through the air.
There are an additional set of question or comments, one from Mr. Buckley. The town needs to know the catchment area by decibel in order to understand the impact of these projects. It can't be dismissed as just a little bit of ledge. And then the second comment is, again, Miss Buckley, and the comment is, then please hire an acoustical engineer. We deserve answers to questions. We can't make anyone do that, but we do know that people want to be good neighbors and there's a lot of negotiations. Even within a tiny space, there's big negotiations that can be had. There's another comment from Diana. Can you please? Well, actually, I thought
Diana also has her hand raised, so I'd like to give her the opportunity to be promoted. And then she could voice her name, address, and any additional questions. And if not, we can just move forward with the one question. She will be coming forward as a panelist.
It looks as if she might have decided to withhold her question.
He is here. She just needs to unmute herself.
Sorry, okay.
Diana, you're unmuted now so we can hear you.
Okay. I have a question. I have a couple of questions. How are you going to handle water runoff from this driveway when you've removed a ledge?
Sure.
Could you, can you? I I would like to first have her name and address.
Oh, my name, I'm sorry. My name is Diana Carter. Legally, my address is two sixty four North Main Street. According to the some town officials, it is twenty five Dolan Lane.
Thank you. Proceed.
Yeah, so currently runoff flows off this hill either in a southerly direction towards the Carter property or in a westerly direction towards this isolated wetland. That's a runoff from this portion here. In the, once we put a driveway in, there's actually going to be a swell on the down gradient side that's going to intercept the water coming off this hill and direct it back to a large rain garden here, which will be a planted depression. And that is detailed. We have a roadway cross section. So down gradient side, there's a We have a roadway cross section. So down gradient side, there's a, a swell or a ditch running the length of the driveway direct in the water. So this will actually be an improvement. You'll have less runoff onto your property.
Um, actually that's not the area I'm talking about. I'm talking about when you come in the driveway or the driveway to be created. Uh, that's an enormous hill that goes up to Willwright Park. Um, and I already have a runoff problem from an, a previous building that he did. And this is going to increase it unless you're going to explain to me how it won't increase it.
Yeah. So right, so this portion of the driveway here from here to here, that is sloping down towards Dolan Lane currently. And it will continue to slope in that direction. Um, that's where the water is naturally going and it, it runs off quickly now being steep. It's going to continue to run off in that direction.
And what are you going to do?
This won't make it any worse, but we can't fix that existing problem.
I'm sorry, but I disagree. It will make it a lot worse. There's a lot of rain that's coming down. He put in, he put in a drain. It does not work. Also, we have damage to the lane from heavy trucks coming up. We're not able to be repaved by the town. So therefore we're going to have to request that then when this is completed, that there be a repaving of Dolan Lane by him. Also, the third thing I have that is concerning me a great deal is that Dolan Lane technically only has ten feet width. Also, it's a dead end. So could you explain to me where the trucks are going to go? Where they're going to park and how you're going to do that?
Yep. So Dolan Lane, there, there's a pull off right at the end of the driveway. Uh, and in a Dolan Lane wide enough for two cars, which is where myself and Ms. Glassmire parked the other day. Um, that area is going to be further opened up for the driveway, creating more room for parking. Um, and that will be initially when you, to get into the property. Once this driveway is, is, is roughed in, then the parking will be back at the house. So it, it will be tight in this area, but they are going to further open up that area and make more, make room for.
And how can they further open that area if you don't mind explaining to me? Because this is basically a dead end. So there is no way you can go. And a truck, to be honest with you, a heavy truck, um, a USPS truck or, um, an Amazon truck right now is not able to back in and out of there comfortably, the big trucks. So I'd like to know how you're going to do this.
So they're going to open up the, the proposed tree line from here to here. That gets them off the road. When they're doing this driveway, they're not, they're not exporting that material. They're keeping it onsite. So they're really dropping off their equipment and the vehicles that the employees, you know, the contractors coming, come arriving will park here. They're working in this area, pushing the material back to fill this area. And then once they're through here, all the parking will be all back by the house. Um, we don't anticipate any damage to the road, but if there is the, if they, if they do damage Dolan Lane, it will have to be repaired by the applicant.
And can I, um, ask if that be included somewhere? I don't know how you do that to be honest, but, um, but I really need to, um, take a good look at that because, um, it, the lane was fine until, um, Mr. Stasko started working and now we're starting to get breakdowns. We've seen areas where he hasn't repaired it. He hasn't gone and done that. And I, so I need to, I need to get for all of us, we need to have that, um, authorization to say that it needs to be repaired if it's damaged. Also, on my septic system, I'm going to ask if it's possible, um, to have this looked at. Uh, you were very, very quick to talk about my septic system. But my septic systems runs right along the line, all the way across and to the side. Um, and I would like to know, should I, uh, can I put in there a request that Rosano Davis be able to come examine it? And then after it's examined it again, to make sure that there's no permanent damage to it.
Um, I, I'm just going to jump in here. Uh, I just want to make sure that the board, ensures that there's a nexus between some of the items that, uh, that are being raised and the actual work that, uh, are the reason why a special permit is necessary here. Um, certainly with respect to the road, if there's any, um, damage done to the road as a result of the ledge removal activity. Um, we have no problem with a condition that requires, um, the applicant to repair that and restore it to the prior condition. Um, Dolan, Dolan Lane is not technically a twelve foot wide road. It's actually, uh, technically a twenty-five foot wide way. Um, uh, I don't know that at least the right of way is, but I'm not sure how that's, uh, relevant to this. As far as the septic system is concerned, um, I think I would object. I think that the, uh, you know, re- requiring a pre-post, um, analysis to be paid for and, uh, by the, by the applicant, um, I, I, I'm not sure, you know, I, a lot of the, a good portion of the driveway is close to the septic system, but that's, that's not the ledge removal. And then, and I think that's kind of the point that I, I wanted to make with respect to septic system, um, respectfully. Thank you. And Jeff, I don't know if you have any question about that or comments.
Okay.
No, I agree with your comments, Jeff.
That's a pitch. Um, uh, this is Amy Glassmire commenting. Um, uh, many neighborhoods and many individuals in Cohasset are facing the same exact development challenge. And, um, the town, uh, is basically not liable for the response, for the, the damage that's done. It is related to the action of the developer and, um, and so in many cases, individuals that are part of a situation like that actually negotiate with their neighbors or their, the, the individual who owns the land to make some accommodations. And that's, uh, a legitimate request that can be made by you. We're not in a position to actually execute that because we're not responsible, uh, in that manner for this particular, um, requirement of, uh, the, the, uh, special permit process.
As Jeff said, there will be erosion control measures put in place and, um, you know, clear staking and limited work activity. Uh, all is required obviously by the conservation commission. So there are some protections there with respect to the septic system. Thank you.
Amy Bergit has her hand raised.
Uh, I don't, I can't see it unfortunately. I apologize, Bergit, Bergit. I couldn't see it.
I'm, I'm sorry. I had Zoom problems. I, I, I dropped and came back. And so you may have discussed, uh, the question that I have already. Um, we specified, um, in, in the bylaw that the, yeah, and kind of going by the volume of the ledge, um, to be removed. And the, the application did not have a volume statement. It had a square foot statement, correct?
Yeah. And that was, um, that was mentioned in the peer review letter. And we responded to that and it did provide the volume, which was two hundred and thirty cubic yards.
And how is, I mean, I hear that you are reusing, um, the, um, removed ledge to use it for, um, the wall. Um, but, you know, kind of the, the point that, um, we're trying to, to, to assess is, you know, the amount of volume, ledge volume that you are removing. How is that, um, how, you know, how does that relate to the actual amount of the driveway, you know, to that portion of the driveway to be used? And I just want to make, um, make sure that we are, you know, kind of, yes, you are reusing ledge. But, you know, kind of, um, how much ledge are you removing in relation to the, um, to the driveway, um, construction at that point? It's like, yeah, a ledge can be, I don't, I haven't seen the ledge. I don't know how big the ledge is, how high the ledge is and how, you know, kind of the extension of the ledge, um, is laid out there. Um, but it's to be avoided that we have, you know, kind of a twenty foot high ledge that needs to be removed for, you know, kind of two inches. No, that's not right. Seven inches of, of driveway.
Right. So I prepared a figure after meeting with Ms. Glassmire on the property, which is a cut and fill plan of this portion of the driveway. And the yellow areas, the ledge that's exposed, which is obviously a cut. Um, the red areas are, are cuts. The blue areas are fill. The darker red areas are a deeper cut. So this is showing that coming off the driveway, there'll be a slight fill, slight cut. This is really what we're talking about here. This cut through here. And then that material is going to be used in this area to build this area up right here.
And the proportions are, yeah, kind of, um, yeah, kind of working out kind of like one to one, um.
Well, th- they do. So this, just this area of fill is three hundred and eleven cubic yards. And we have two hundred and thirty cubic yards to, to disperse. We can also use some of it out around the house as well. Um, the total cut, cut there is four hundred and fifteen yards, but that's not all ledge. Some of that's soil.
Okay.
So we really, we've been working at this for a long time through the conservation process as well. And really trying to find a best fit here. I mean, it's like working with clay and finding a best fit for the cut and fill minimizing the ledge removal while not, uh, proposing too steep of a driveway or too tall of a wall. But we, we think this is the best fit that we've come up with.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, all right. Um, other comments from the public? Other, um, comments from the, uh, planet, planning board members? Any additional comments that might be, uh, that have arisen at, by the peer review?
Uh, there are two comments in the Q and A that just popped up. Uh, Mr. Buckley of two seventy-two North Main Street states, "The wetland adjacent to Dolan Lane is already overloaded under current precipitation conditions. Runoff will only be exasperated by more construction as Diana stated. This all runs into the harbor." And then Barbara Buckley, two seventy-two North Main Street commented and said that she was interested to hear from Mr. Brewer.
All right. So to address the stormwater, I don't think it's really related so much to this application, but we did prepare a full stormwater report that was, um, approved by conservation. And the, the, the point of that is to document the pre and the post rates and volumes of runoff. And to show that you're not increasing the amount of runoff. And the way we accomplish that is we're directing all of this runoff to a depression and holding it back onsite and infiltrating it onsite.
As far as my participation, I'm, um, i- i- if the Buckleys are listening and, and they, uh, live on North Main Street to the west of this site, um, uh, because I'm in a butter, um, typically I wouldn't participate in the meeting at all. Uh, but because we have, uh, a member of the planning board that recently resigned and another one who's taken a, an extended leave of absence, we wouldn't be able to have this hearing at all. If, uh, I wasn't, um, uh, sitting here as a, as a, a member of the planning board. But, uh, in terms of, um, making comments, uh, I have made some. Uh, but my participation is, um, is, is by necessity minimal.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Um, so if there are any additional questions that need to be asked, this is the time to ask them. Otherwise, we will, um, determine the wishes of the planning board by asking a member, any member, uh, if they would like to make a motion to approve or deny the land alteration special permit for thirty-one Dolan Lane with or without condition.
Amy, I've raised my hand. I just lowered it.
Sorry.
Um, I will entertain. I will put forth a motion to approve the special permit plan as, uh, applicant has put forth in front of us as per the, uh, as per specified in the, um, uh, documents provided, uh, and discussed.
Well, here a second.
A second.
Um, I will then do a roll call. Uh, uh, I am going to, uh, leave Mr. Brewer, uh, or let me ask Carolyn, can he, uh, vote for this?
Yeah, I'd have to vote even though she's muted. Why don't you let me vote at the end?
Um, okay.
Yes. Sorry.
Okay. So it is the case that we have a, um, a motion to approve the land alteration special permit for thirty-one Dolan Lane, um, without condition.
Do you have to close the, the comment period or any comments or anything before we vote on this?
I would recommend closing the public hearing and then taking the vote to either approve or deny.
All right. So, um, can I get a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Um, roll call.
Clark Brewer, I.
Amy Glassmire, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
Bill, it would be shy.
Uh, this, um, closure has passed. And then let's, um, make an motion to approve or deny the land alteration special permit for thirty-one.
Already been made, so. That's already been made and seconded. Uh, would we have to do that again?
No.
Well, okay. Thank you. Um, so all in favor, uh, say aye alphabetical.
Uh, could you, uh, ask for my vote at the end?
Um, I can, yes. Uh, Amy Glassmire, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
Yep. Bill, it would be shy.
Clark Brewer, I.
All right. Thank you. Uh, the vote passes. Uh, for I. And the public hearing for thirty-one Dolan Lane is now closed.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
All right. The next is a public hearing for a land alteration special permit at forty-two Rust Way for removal of five hundred and sixty-eight square feet of ledge for construction of a sport court. This is a new public hearing. Public hearing notice to be read pursuant to MGL chapter forty-one dash A and three hundred dash nine point one of the Cohasset zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the zoning platform webinar ID eight eight nine eight six three five eight six nine zero pass code four two one nine three four. On Wednesday, February fifth, two thousand and twenty-five at six thirty PM for a land alteration special permit for property being shown on Cohasset assessor map, D two dash zero one zero dash zero four eight for forty-two Rust Way Cohasset, Massachusetts. The applicant is removing five hundred and thirty-six, thirty, five hundred and sixty-eight square feet of ledge for construction of a sport court. The application is submitted by Brian and Kayla Dumoulin. Forty-two Rust Way Cohasset MA zero two zero two five. A copy of the application and plans and accompanying documents are on file for viewing in the town clerk office at Cohasset Town Hall, forty-one Houghton Avenue, Monday through Thursday, eight AM to four thirty PM and Friday, eight AM to twelve PM. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting HTTPS colon backslash backslash Cohasset Massachusetts dot org backslash five two four backslash active dash PB dash applications. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time to. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated. Um, we will begin the, um, hearing and we open up the hearing and we'll, uh, commence. The discussion with the following order applicants to present, ask for peer review to present, ask for members. Comments, then ask for the public odyssey, um, audience comments. So, um, Cassandra will assist with the timekeeping and reading of public comments. May I begin? Uh, would someone like to begin in the discussion? Or, excuse me, would the applicant please start the discussion?
Sure. Th- thank you very much. And Jeff Hassett again, um, here on behalf of the property owners, Kayla and Brian Demoulin. Um, this is a, another land disturbance special permit for the removal of ledge not necessary to construct a sport court or. More specifically, a pickleball court at their property at forty-two Rust Way. So this is the site plan for the property. Uh, the property is one point six acres. It's currently under construction with the, uh, single family home that's nearing completion. And the property slopes, um, from the back, um, Rust Way is located at the bottom of the page. Um, the high point of the site is in this area with the, all the land sloping off towards the wetland. So to give you the history of this property, um, prior to the design of this project, um, prior to two thousand and twenty-two, it was a vacant wooded lot. Uh, the house was permitted in two thousand and twenty-two through a conservation order of conditions. And a stormwater permit as well as a building permit. Um, that, those plans proposed ledge removal and grading and a limit of work up to here, which is I'm showing on this. Current plan in Magenta. I've added that line, line for this application, um, to the plan that was previously approved. And. Now, we've, we submitted an amendment to, in November, we revised the plan. We submitted an amendment to conservation, which included the pickleball court. Um, and that, that was approved under an amended NOI and stormwater permit. Uh, the ledge at this point is completely exposed. They were ready to clear it, to remove it. And then they became aware of this bylaw change, which is why we're in front of you. So the ledge that we need, um, permission that was not previously permitted to be removed is the additional yellow area right here. And that is a total of five hundred and sixty-eight square feet or a hundred and fifteen cubic yards. Alternatively, though, the blue area was previously approved to be removed. That was gonna be, the driveway is gonna come more in like this and have a little bit of a yard area here. Instead, that portion of the ledge will, will, will remain, um, and that's the visible portion from the road. So I think it's a. A nice balance there, um, and, um, I'll flip to the landscape plan. Zoom out a little bit. So the la- the, I thought the landscape architect did a really nice job with it. So the pi- the pickleball court is here. The ledge that is being removed is here, although this portion here was previously permitted to be removed. And this area here will no longer be removed. So that's what will be more visible from, from the roadway. And then he's also added, uh, screening. There will be a four foot tall hedge. Along this side of the pickleball court with a, a break just for a four foot wide gate here. And then the only line of sight, um, from an abutting property is the butter to the right here. And we're providing, uh, eight, uh, yeah, eight fourteen foot tall spruces. And then also between the roadway and the pickleball court, numerous trees and shrubs along either side of the driveway. So I think the landscape architect did a really nice job preserving portions of the ledge that could be. Exposing portions of the ledge and then providing, um, providing plantings to really screen that pickleball court. Uh, I can show you a photograph. So this is a photograph that I submitted. Again, back, back in two thousand and twenty-two, this was wooded and only partially exposed. It's now entirely cleared. This would be the, that left side of the pickleball court extending into the ledge. And then this would be the portion that was previously going to be removed, but, but will now remain. And with that, I will pass it back to you for questions. Thank you.
Um, can we hear from the peer regu- peer review, please?
P G B engineering is not present at this time.
Um, I, I can address their comments. Um. They had two comments. The first one was to provide the volume of ledge, which we did, um, hundred and fifteen, yep, hundred and fifteen cubic yards. The second was whether or not we could provide, uh, one to one mitigation by exposing ledge elsewhere. And my response to that is that this area, the four thirty-two, as well as this area that's exposed. It is actually five sixty-nine. It's essentially the same amount of, of ledge. Um, in addition, there's another portion of ledge over here that's been exposed and that will remain exposed. And you can see that on the, um. The landscaping plan, they're putting a walkway in and planting around that ledge.
All right. So the, I presume that, uh, uh, completes the peer review comment. Thank you. So let's hear from the planning board members. Mr. Brewer, would you like to begin?
Kevin's got his hand raised.
I can't see cause there, the question.
Yep, no problem. Um, I noticed in that area of the ledge that's already exposed, um. Mr. Hassett, that there's an area of peystone cover, um, and it looks like on one of your, uh, renderings, that's an area for like overflow parking or trailer parking. Is that, is that right? You have it by your highlighter right there?
Yeah, so we have a paved driveway, a paved, you know, courtyard in front of the garage and then room for some additional parking right here. And then that, that's a peystone area.
I, I suspect the peystone is of limited depth and underneath that peystone area is. An additional, um, area of exposed ledge if that was not gonna be covered with peystone. And carved out the way you have it there with a nice ninety degree corner and everything.
Correct. Um. I don't know if you could really get the ledge. Flat enough that you would park directly on it without putting at least, you know, an inch or two of peystone on top and inch of peystone.
Yeah. And, and that's, that's where I'm driving the question from. I guess, um, you know, the legend its own right in the way that you're, you're saving it in the blue area. Is, is great. Um, I just, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit, um. Uh, I, I, I don't like how it just ends. It ends at a, it, it ends at a, it, it ends where there's a ninety and there's a straight edge going up to the. East and then there's another straight edge going over to the north on the left. And then it's an area where it's gonna be covered with peystone. I guess I would rather see that that area of preserved ledge that you have shown in blue. Have more of a natural, um. Uh, shape to it and not a configured shape to it, um. By virtue of what you've covered up and are carving out as an additional parking area. So.
Yeah, so you don't wanna see the right angles here.
Well, yeah, I guess. And, and like you said, if there's a way to use, you know, part of that ledge to park on it, um. And just, you know, maybe it isn't carved out as a nice box right there, but it's, it's, it just allows more of a natural contour of the edge over there and maybe, um. Either a fingering of the ledge or just maybe of a more of a sinuous contour over there. Um, I, I, I would, I would, I would take more to what you're preserving, um, and you're shown in blue. If it had more of a natural shape to it and it wasn't covered over by this, uh, this square, uh, peystone covered box portion of it.
Yeah, I think they could round the corners here and round them here and give it more of a natural look to it, certainly. Um, it won't be visible to, from, by anyone other than the homeowner, but I think.
No, you're, you're, and point, point well taken, um, you know, based on the approaches that you have drawn out with the driveway. But, um, I think it would just kind of lend itself more towards your plantings and your, uh, your overall landscape plan to just kind of let that naturally. Fit in there.
Sure.
And if there could be any provision for that, I think that would, could make it just even more palatable, um. Uh, than what you have shown here with that peystone, uh, square landing and part of the. What is presumably part of the ledge underneath a very shallow veneer of peystone.
Sure. Yeah, we could certainly round those corners and make them look more natural.
That's all I had.
Um, I have a question.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Um, the, the blue area that we were just talking about, this is ledge that has already. That is already there on the property. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. That is, I'll show you the photograph again. Where did it go? That is this area here.
Right, right, right. So this is not, this is not, um. Ledge that has been, um, you know, kind of exposed explicitly now. It has always been there, correct?
It has always been there. It's always been partially exposed. It took, it's only recently been, you know, completely cleared off.
Yeah. So I mean, there's always a little, you know, kind of vegetation on, on any rock, right? Um, um, what I.
You an aerial photo. So that ledge is right in this area. This was from twenty. Before construction, twenty twenty-one, maybe.
The, yeah, kind of, again, the volume that, uh, sorry.
So go ahead.
Uh, so the volume that you need to, you know, kind of take off for the, um, for the pickleball field. Is a hundred and fifteen cubic yards.
Correct.
Um, now you, again, most, you know, kind of what do you need? To build the pickleball field at that, you know, kind of spot that is in question here. I'm trying to relate, you know, and kind of what, what we are asking for is, you know, and kind of don't take more than what you actually. You know, kind of need to build, um, your, um, construction, in this case, the pickleball field.
Yeah, so this.
Pickleball field doesn't have incredibly depth either. It's kind of like the driveway that we had before. Um.
Th- this is the absolute minimum amount of ledge that would have to be removed to put a pickleball court in.
Right. Do you know how much you, at that, kind of like in relation for the pickleball field, how much you need? Um, to construct it? How much, how much yards is it to construct, you know, and kind of in relation? That part of the pickleball field.
So, so this is a hundred and fifteen cubic yards.
Of ledge.
Of ledge that's going to be removed in order to level off this area to make a, a flat area for the pickleball court.
What I'm trying to get at, how much do you need for building the, you know, kind of. Say there is no ledge, right? There's not been a ledge, you know, kind of to construct the pickleball field in, in this area. How much do you need to? You know, kind of depth do you need? Height do you need, you know, and kind of to, to, um. In cubic yards and relate just the plain field. Once you have the ledge taken off, now you build the, the, the field. How, you know, kind of, what is that volume wise at that point?
I mean, you, you probably in areas. I mean, y- y- if there wasn't ledge, you would strip the topsoil and the subsoil and then build it back up with a, a gravel that can really be compacted. And then you have the asphalt for the pickleball court. Um, in this case, because it's ledge, you're not gonna go down any deeper than you need to and you don't need a gravel base. So you would only go six, say six inches deeper than, um, the pickleball court and then build it back up with the asphalt. Um, so I mean, twenty, twenty-seven by fifty-four. About about twenty-seven.
Hmm.
So they want a foot, that would be about fifty-four cubic yards.
Yeah.
They went down one foot of material below the entire, entire pickleball court.
And that would be for the entire pickleball field.
Yes.
Yes, and. Which is bigger than the area that we are looking at here now. Um, yeah. So let it be like one third or so, yeah, kind of fifty is something half of it. Um, but why I'm saying we, we are, you know, kind of, um, allowing or, you know, kind of. Um. Yeah, allowing to say have an exposed ledge at some other place, you know, and kind of expose under, you know, kind of. Um, ground ledge and make it visible, you know, to, um, um, and. The aesthetics in another place, but I don't quite see that here. We had. I mean, this is not the same as, well, I have other ledges here that I'm not touching. Um, but I need to touch it here.
So any, any ledge that could be exposed really will be, um. Just because it's such a limited work area, um, we can't go into the fifty-foot buffer for conservation. So there's, you know, there's this ledge outcrop that we're contending with. This one, we're already leaving exposed. Um, this area, I mean, I guess if we dug deep enough, we probably hit ledge. But we're trying to keep that, keep soil there so we can plant it as a buffer. Um, so. Otherwise, you know, if we didn't do this, we just reverted back to the plan that was already approved back in two thousand and twenty-two. All of this would have been removed in it. So that's kind of offsetting it now.
I, I was not part of that. Was that by special permit?
No, it was prior to, um, the bylaw. Right.
Okay. So, um, Jeff, does this run us into a situation where? This is a compromise, this is an alteration that leads to a, a lessening of what was originally, uh, proposed. But still, the rule has changed and the expectation has changed as to what you would be. Doing to ameliorate the consequence of changing that location and that slide. Uh, we're not obviating the responsibility of that effort. So can you tell me that you have it, um, a one-to-one ra- uh, relationship between what has happened? We can't go back in time. We have to actually stay with where we are now. I think legally Carolyn would be the person to say whether or not you are not bound by the. Rearticulation of the land use, land alteration bylaw. I don't know if Carolyn is still here. But you get my drift, right? You know, that, that basically the, the whole intent of. Extending the idea of the preservation of ledge was that, okay. You're, you're gonna do something here, but you're gonna essentially reproduce, make visually apparent. Something that is according, uh, accorded to what was in the location in its original. Place where it's being removed. So h- help me square this right.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I think the, the landscape architect, um, you know, he designed this prior to the bylaw change. But I think he had the same intent in mind where he was keeping it, preserving as much land, much ledge as possible, especially the area. In the areas where it's going to be visible, exposing it, um, in areas where it previously wasn't. And then also providing screening from the abutting properties and the roadway. And really only ultimately the ledge that is gonna be removed is in an area that's not going to be visible from those public areas. And also exposing ledge wherever feasible.
Um, I'm gonna hold off right now and, uh, we'll, let's hear what the other planning board member. Uh, uh, thinks. Clark, would you like to comment?
Oh, am I the only one who hasn't commented?
Yeah.
Um, so, I mean, uh, this is a pretty intense use of the site, right? I mean, what's, what's left of it, uh, outside of the conservation's jurisdiction? Um, and, um. While I understand that pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the country, in addition, pickleball injuries are one of the fastest. Medical, uh, issues that have come up. Um, I, you know, uh, to me, the, this, the, the ledge issue has always been what's visible, prominent, uh, important. Significant, um, um, ledge that that should be preserved. And I, I have to say, the applicant, um, trading off. Ledge that we previously approved removal of with, um, some further back and sort of out of sight. I think is, is a reasonable approach to this. I think is, is a reasonable approach to this. Um, y- y- you know, i- interestingly, the, the geometric carving out of. The ledge for the pickleball court, uh, seems a bit unnatural and it, and at five feet high. I don't know if that's like a, a natural retaining wall that exceeds what, what's allowed, um. The three-foot height, uh, retaining wall. I'm not really sure how that works. And I'm not sure that's, that's really an issue, but it's, um, it, you know, uh, I, it, it's potentially relevant. Um, I mean, I just see that the, this site is, what's available to the applicant is being used so intensely that, um. I, I almost think the preserving of the blue area of ledge in exchange for the pickleball court ledge. Seems reasonable to me, I, and I hate to admit it, but those are my comments.
Um, all right, uh, I'd like to ask Kevin again. Do you have any other thoughts?
I, I'll just circle back to the point I made and, and I think, I think, um. Mr. Brewer hit the hammer on the head with regard to this is a very intensely used site. And, um, it's, it's used to the maximum. And, uh, you know, I think it would, it would appeal to me to see, to not have a pea gravel carve out. In the area where there is, i- it's even on your, it's on your figure, um, Mr. Hass said. It, 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 it shows ledge and the indication of ledge extending underneath that pea gravel parking area. Um, and further to the north in an area, um, where, and even off the, the northern edge of the property. So, you know, if the applicant, um. You know, is dead set on, you know, the pea gravel, um, I, I just see that as kind of getting in the way of n- some natural exposed ledge. That could be over there and extend, like I said, more natural contours of the existing ledge. Instead of covering up with pea gravel to put another, um, intense use on that property. And, um. You know, uh, uh, the, the, for the recreational purposes, if that's the priority, then, you know, let's just see that, you know, a, a, a good. Um, uh, good faith, um, swap out of this, you know, on, on, on the part of everyone's, uh, efforts here. I think that would go a long ways to really kind of making this work. Um.
Yeah, the, the other thing I really want to emphasize here is that before, I mean, this ledge has been manually ex- further exposed. When they were beginning to, they were prepping, they had the, um, blast, they had the blaster lined up to do this work. So they had exposed the ledge and were ready to go. And, you know, it wasn't fully exposed like it is right now before that.
Well, the truth is with these ledge, you know, you let it, you let it's, it's there. It's, it's, it's been there. Well, before we even settled the area and well before, it'll be there well after we're all gone, okay? But, you know, a, a thin layer of detrius on top of ledge, does that make the ledge go away? Okay? When you improve a site and you get the leaves and the detrius out of the way, you got ledge, okay? And sometimes it might just be a three or four inch, um, root mat that you peel off. And it's a whole root mat full of poison ivy and invasive plants and all that. I mean, that's not something someone would want to develop a site to and leave there. So, you know, your landscape architect is working with the contours of the land, working with available soil. Staying away from bedrock because they can't plant a tree in it or something like that. And then to go in there and then want to cover it up so you can put another recreational or non-recreational use of it. It just kind of flies in the face of what we're talking about here, where an area that we know has ledge. And the applicant seeking an accommodation for recreational use of an area. And then, oh, okay, right next to it, there's an area where we're gonna cover up some ledge that we know is very shallow, you know, with a couple inches of. Of bed that will level it out so that can be used. So it's, it's, it, it just, it's kind of a co- a compilation of uses here. Um, that are making this, I think, more difficult than it needs to be. Um, and I think. Uh, I, I, you know, some consideration of that by the applicant. Um, beyond just kind of appear, appears like they're almost doing the de minimis here. Um, is not kind of getting us to where we need to be to get this resolved.
Right.
So I gather from the co- so at this point, we have, uh, gone through three of the four, um. Organizations and individuals who have a chance to speak. So Cassandra, could you please go through the list? Of people who would like to comment? Make sure if they wish to speak that they say who they are, or say who they are and where they live.
Sure, uh, so one member of the public has had their hand raised, um, for a majority of the presentation. So I'd like to give them the opportunity to be promoted now.
Go ahead.
They will be rejoining as a panelist, so it'll just take them a minute to come in. They are here, though. They will need to unmute themselves. While we're waiting, um, there is a, another member of the public who also would like to be promoted. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and promote them now, just to kind of move things along. Mr. Hartwell, I think you could take the opportunity to speak at this time.
Oh, great. Thank you. This is Jeff Hartwell from, uh, Fifty-four Rustway. I'm the director butter closest to this pickleball court. Um, and I wanted to know, I had a couple of questions, but I wanted to know most of all, the, the, um, engineer. Uh, made reference in the Conservation Commission meeting on, uh, I believe it was November seventh. Of a significant portion of the ledge that had already been removed. There was a conversation going on about the. Kind of the strain of the site and, um, removing all of this rock from that ledge. And, uh, I think to, to sort of ease the mind of the Conservation Commission, um, the reference was made to ledge that had already been removed. And I'd like to understand where that is in this plan, uh, to ensure that we're not trading off ledge that has already been removed. And, you know, first question, I guess, so let me stop there and, uh, and pause for an answer. Thanks.
Um, I think the comment was that the ledge was already permitted to be removed and under the plan, they had already approved a portion of it.
Doubtful. Uh, we'll go back. I'll take a look. Thank you. Um. The, uh, the, the second question I have is, um. Is really about lighting around the pickleball court? Are you able to speak to that at this point? I wasn't able to see. Um, based on the, the plan, what the plan is for the lighting.
Um, I'd have to get back to you on that. I can reach out to the landscape architect on it. I'm, I'm suspecting that, yeah, let me get back to, uh, to you on that. I assume you don't want it lit up and people playing pickleball at night.
Yeah, that would be the preference, um.
And I assume that would be fine, but I can't speak to it right now.
Yeah, I'd really like to, there has been ledge removed. Um, there was, um, a bobcat. With a, a removal tool that was been working in that area of the blue. It maybe not directly in the area of the blue, could have been around it. I can't quite make that out on the plan. I just, I think that the committee should understand. If there has been work done on that ledge already, I, 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 I can attest that there has been because I've seen it out my window. I just don't know directly in what area it occurred and to what extent it occurred.
Timing would also be important because if it occurred prior to the special town meeting, there was a. Different approach to the removal of ledge and now there is a new one. And so it really would matter exactly in terms of timing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I can, I can recall that the weather was pretty decent, but that's about all I can place it in, in the fall, I think, so.
I, I know when the applicant, when the builder was notified that they do apply for the special permit, at that point, you know, soon after that, our surveyors went out. To relocate the ledge and that's the limit of the ledge that you're, that we're showing on this plan, right here.
Uh, Je- Jeff, so does that mean that within the confines of, uh, the picture that we see here? Um, the ledge that was adjusted where the.
Did Amy screen freeze?
Yeah. Seems she's not the on- I'm not the only one with some problems tonight.
The, the point I was trying to make though is that, as far as I'm aware, there hasn't been any ledge removal since the bylaw change.
Amy, you're screen froze. We missed a, about a minute of your. Point.
Well, my point was simply that, uh, the area that is now blue, uh. Is that in question as it relates to whether or not there was adjustment made to it prior to or after. The change in the bylaw. And if, if it occurred prior to it, the homeowner is. We, uh, uh, enabled to have done that. If it is post, then it would mean that the, um, uh, applicant was not. Um, supposed to do that or not, or needed to be, um, uh, reviewed prior to anything happening.
Yeah, to, to clarify, that area in blue is still there and any ledge removal was done before the bylaw change.
When was the bylaw changed? Sorry, folks, do you know?
It. It was on December, it was posted in, I think, October and I, I believe the attorney general has now acted on it. Is that correct?
The attorney general has not acted on it yet. Um, I don't recall the exact date off the top of my head. Um, but the public hearings took place in October, um, so it would have been advertised prior to those public hearings.
But once the bylaw was put in front of the public and posted. Then that stops the old story and starts the new story. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this is, um, I know this is splitting hairs, but this is what the job's about, um. We, uh, I, we don't, we don't have any way other than I, do you think that the landscape architect would know? Exactly. I mean, we're really, I know we're splitting hairs, but we are splitting hairs on a purpose.
I- is the question whether there was ledge removed after the bylaw change?
No, that is, as soon as the bylaw is written and it is presented.
It's publicly advertised is the, is the, the trigger date.
Yeah, that. So that means it could be a month, it could be two months, it could be three months. We worked on the bylaw for almost three years.
Uh, presumably Cassandra could confirm the exact date that that ledge. Um.
Bylaw.
Language change, um, to the bylaw was publicly advertised.
You give me a moment, I can, um, backtrack and get that date. I just have to look back in the files.
But then, you, you know, the, the reality, I'm, I'm not trying to give anyone some slack. But the reality of the communication of a, of a, of a landowner knowing that. That date of public advertising was, is effectively the date of the bylaw change, even though it hasn't passed yet. If it passes, nobody would know except planning board and select board.
So it looks like the first date of publication would have been September twenty-fifth.
September twenty-fifth, was it?
Yes.
Okay.
While it is, um, maybe inopportune, we do have a date. So we have a, I, an idea of where the effect began. And I suspect that the ar- the landscape architect, knowing him, uh, probably has, uh. Several different diagrams that went into the final produ- production of this particular diagram. And so if we asked them, we could find out whether or not this is a pre or a post decision. Because if we don't go and investigate this, then we are going, we are basically in a way breaking the law. We made, we made a deal, but we didn't carry it out. And I think we have to be consistent in our practices.
Chair Glassmeyer, are you saying we should, uh, request this, this additional confirmation of these activities, uh, the dates? Uh, from the applicant and the, and continue the hearing tonight to, uh, the next meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
To, to understand the question, are you asking, has there been any life removal since September twenty-fifth?
That's correct.
Okay, I am ninety-nine percent sure that the answer to that is no. They've been doing a lot of work on the house itself, but I haven't seen much site work going on. But I can get a confirmation for that, on that.
All right, that would be, um, a lot more, uh, we would rest easier. This is our job.
Sure.
And Jeff, I mi- I might add that if there were any, um, site photos that, um, could document. The conditions of that ledge around that time period, um, that could be, uh, beneficial.
Yeah, I can, I can find that.
And I, and I suspect if you had a landscape architect walk in the land, um, they may have taken some photos.
Okay.
Cassandra, I just got a text from the landscape architect who says he's got his hand raised.
Oh. Apologies, I thought that was just a member of the public. I can promote them now. Thank you, Clark.
Yep.
They're muted. We can hear you now.
Yeah, Jimmy? Yeah, so this is, um, Brian Fraser, I'm the landscape architect of the project. And I just wanted to comment about a few different things. Um, first, Jeff Hotwell, the butter, um, to the right of the property. He had a question about lighting on the pickleball court and the answer to that one is no lighting. I think that kind of was one question up for grabs. And then the other question up for grabs was, um, that area of blue and what that kind of constitutes. Um, Jeff kind of said this, I just want to say it again, that is an area of ledge that we have already been previously permitted to remove. But we have not removed it. So, um, it has been exposed, it was prepared to be removed and we held off on it. And we're proposing there to keep it in exchange for moving what we need to for the pickleball court. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that. Um, and that, there hasn't been any work, like Jeff said, since at least the summer on this ledge. At least, if not before that.
Thanks for that. So, so perhaps we don't need to. Delay a decision based on getting that confirmation.
Right, I don't think so. I mean, this, this site is set, um, would not. The only trucks that have gone out of that site have been, you know, guys doing work inside the house. There's, there hasn't been any, you know. Site, 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 site trucks in that site for a while now. So there hasn't been any work to it.
So it just seems like um, one of the only hangups then that perhaps is out there, and I, maybe I shouldn't say only, but. Is there a, it, it, we, we see a number of five, Jeff can help, help us out here. We see a number of um. Tear down for ledge and you're saying the actual, the actual minimum of it is what amount? And I think it's the five.
Five, five hundred and sixty-eight square feet.
Okay, and then we see a blue area that you're not going to touch, but you're already approved to remove out, and that's like four hundred.
Four hundred and thirty-two, yeah.
So where's the difference then? One something?
Uh, one thirty-six.
How, how would we just make this square here? So it's a, it's a one for one, because I think I heard one of the other board members um. Question that and why we weren't doing that. Where can you find it? Where could you find that perhaps, based on your knowledge of the site? And we have the landscape architect here. His knowledge of the site. Could we get to a one-to-one here?
Yeah, I think this area on the, the other side of the house here is be, is going to be landscaped around and remain, to keep exposed.
So that is um, above and beyond the current situation, so that that would then be a plus? It would be a hundred plus?
That, that is exposed now. It'll remain exposed.
So you're saying the intention was originally to cover it?
No, the intention has been to keep it exposed, but it is another area that of landscape, of ledge that has been cleared off. And it will be, and it's kind of remaining as a landscape feature. Planted around.
Which is not quite the same as, you know, there to, you know, kind of. Give us, give us a com, you know, and kind of um, something in, in compensation. If, you know, can it. You have a number of ledges existent and you are not touching them. And want to remove, you know, and kind of a fourth one doesn't, you know, kind of. Um, do away with the argument of, how much are you, are, are you removing? This fourth ledge in relation to what you need to build. Um, and that one, I'm still a little bit shaky on because I know that, you know, and kind of the ledge is. The extent of the ledge in, in, in volume is, is a lot more than what you actually then need to build. For a pickleball field. So the, the relation there does not quite match up. Um, and yes, we are saying if you can find other areas where you can expose ledge. Not I, not just point to, yeah, we have other ledge in the other corner. Um, then that would make up for removing that part. Um, so I'm not quite convinced. Yet.
Can I suggest that we um, we minimize the overflow parking area to just. Balance the cut and fill, the, the, the removal of the ledge to one-to-one?
Yeah, I think, Brian, I was thinking the same. I know if that's twenty feet wide, um, if we reduce it by six point eight feet.
Yeah.
That, that checks that box.
I think we should just do that, and I think that that's fine. That, that's really just an adequate kind of little extra turnaround space and. Overflow parking area. So I think that we can let that go, no problem. And then also to answer your question about the amount of material removed as a. What do you need minimum for a court and what do you need for this? It doesn't really relate because this is a cut and fill specific to this site. So whether or not this is ledge or not, no matter what, that ledge is simply just earth. So we would need to remove that earth no matter what, whether it is ledge or dirt, it's the same cubic volume.
Yeah, so to echo that, we can preserve a hundred and thirty-six square feet of additional space in here. Making this more natural looking, making the turnaround and overflow parking smaller, but it'll be a one-to-one ratio.
And just to be clear, the overflow parking is that um, stone parking um, area as demarcated?
Yes, the piece of parking area here.
Correct.
So that wouldn't go away in its entirety, it would just be, um, you'd be um.
Reduced.
Reducing it, okay. I think that um. I think that um, would be palable. We could write that into um. A, a motion for this. Is that how we would envision putting this uh, and moving, moving on from here?
Uh, would you like to make a motion?
Before any motions are made, there is another member of the public who has some comments.
Oh, sorry, that.
Um, so Jane Corey um. Would like to know what about the pond in their backyard at four twenty-two Jerusalem Road?
Could the, could the questioner make a more definitive statement about what is the concern? Because it's, I, I, it's what about the pond, but it's not clear to me. Is the pond something that didn't exist now exist? Is the pond something that she's interested in? Because it's there at her place, we need to have some, something that's. The problem, what's the problem?
They may be having uh, connection issues because they just left the meeting entirely.
I mean, I can speak to that in general. You know, any project that triggers a stormwater permit. Um, you're required to file with conservation calculations showing um, that you're reducing the rates and volumes of runoff. If there's other, if there's flooding offsite or in the wetlands, you don't, it's not the burden of the developer to resolve that issue. They just can't make it, make it any worse. And those calculations have all been prepared and reviewed and approved by conservation.
So do we presume then, Jeff, that the, the um, wetlands are on the property? That the Ms. Roy is concerned about and that the prospect of excess water. Is um, that arises because of rain or snow or something like that? And, and she's concerned about the potential of an effect?
Yeah, so all of the runoff from this property goes to the wetland. And it results in less runoff to the wetland. So, you know, where, wherever her property is, if she's downstream, this will not make it any worse.
And, and conservation uh, approved that. They, that.
Yeah, they did. Oops, did I, did I just lose my share of screen? Can you see my cursor on this?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so, yeah, so the pickleball court is going to slope in this direction. And then we have area drains picking up the runoff on this side, and then it's all going to an underground drywall system here. So we have a system of plastic chambers, backfill, the crushed stone. Um, that are going to collect, the water is collected and piped to and is infiltrated there.
And the size is correct and the um, expectation of its function is uh. A hundred percent.
Yep, that's all been reviewed and approved by conservation.
Okay. All right. So are we settled now? Do, does everyone feel that the trade is um. Getting us to where we want to be?
Yeah, I think we can word it accordingly. Um, I, I just want to ask, um, because the applicant did say there was. Going to be no associated lighting with this pickleball court, subject to approval of removal of ledge. Um, if we can condition the removal of the ledge that we're happy with, um. Uh, how are we ensured that this is going to remain un, unlit? I mean, in that there wouldn't be some modification down the road that ends up lighting up this pickleball court to the detriment of the neighbor that voiced um. Concern with regard to that.
I mean, we would happily accept that as a condition as well.
So we could include that um, in, in, in uh, how we proceed here. Um, Madam Chair.
All right, so would you like to make a motion of the, uh, well.
Close the public hearing first.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do first. We close the public hearing first. Um, can I uh?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Mark Brewer, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Doug at Twin Face, I.
All right, uh, then we are going to uh, make a motion with. Uh, uh, to close the hearing with, but we want to have um, the set of. The set of conditions specified. So does somebody want to specify the ledge adjustment?
So I'll try to articulate a, a motion to approve the applicant's um. Removal of ledge for the recreational purposes, subject to it being equal to uh, preservation of ledge. Uh, of an equal amount. In the area of um, we can specify the area here, in the area um. Where's, where's my north? North is to the left, in the area just to the, to the, to the west, is that right? Uh, of the um, proposed pickleball area. And um. With the condition that the pickleball court will not have um, associated lighting for it. I think those were the two conditions we were talking about.
Okay, so that's sufficient.
Second.
All right, um. Build a voice vote, alphabetical.
Mark Brewer, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Doug at Smith Vision, I.
All right, there we go. Okay, well, it's been a long evening, but we've accomplished a whole lot. Um, let's see, uh, do we have any um, minutes to approve?
Yes, you have, let's see. Three sets of minutes, uh, December fourth, December ninth, and January eighth.
All right, can we um, approve them as a bundle, or do we need to do them each individually?
We can do it as a bundle, I think.
All right, so then we uh, approve the minutes as spoken by Cassandra. And.
Making a motion?
I'm just stating a fact.
Okay.
Okay, but if you would like to make a motion.
Motion to approve uh, meeting minutes from December fourth, ninth, and January eighth.
Second.
Roll call.
Mark Brewer, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
And Doug at Smith Vision, I.
All right, that's good. Um. With that, we are done with business today and uh, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second? Thank you. Uh, I'll do a roll call vote, alphabetical.
Mark Brewer, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Doug at Smith Vision, I.
All right, uh, thank you very much, uh, members of the public, peer reviewers, individual applicants. Cassandra, our planner. And Carolyn, our legal counsel that we always need.
Mm-hmm. Thank you both. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.